Uh. Give me one second. The, um, major structural alteration submitted by Andrew Carlson, Aaron Bell. Richmond, Jennifer, you want to give the staff report?
And we have Nick presenting for this item.
Okay.
Yep, so, um, so this request is to, uh, for a major trial alteration to keep as constructed retaining walls exceeding four feet in cumulative height and greater than 25% of the lot width. Um, this parcel, um, the owners own the next door lot as well that cannot be sold separate, so it's approximately 0.4 acres when these lots are combined. The project area is on a steep slope to the lake, it's roughly 25%, so it's been altered by the walls. Um, for vegetation, at the time of the first site inspection, there was no vegetation present in the project area. But by a follow-up site visit on September 23rd, sod was placed in disturbed areas around the retaining walls. Uh, no sediment control was in place over the disturbed soils at the time of the site inspection on August 20th. Some erosion had occurred, um, and sediment migrated down, down the slope toward the lake, but, um, sod had been placed on the disturbed areas by the time of the follow-up site visit on the 23rd, and there was no active erosion at that time and after. Um, sediment control was not observed on the site. Um, the septic system is considered compliant from a compliance inspection in 2019. Horseshoe Lake is listed as impaired for elevated nutrient levels as well as mercury and fish tissue. Um, some property history here, um, the property owners did call, um, in April of this year and had, um, inquired about some information on doing a project with a small wall, um, that would be less than four feet tall, located within 20 feet of the structure on the non-lake side of the cabin and not to be visible from the lake. I talked with the individual, um, and stated that no permit would be required under these conditions as, because of the stated conditions there. Uh, later in the summer in August, we received a complaint about retaining walls constructed without a permit. So we followed up on August 20th with a site visit to document the walls that were constructed. Met with the applicants on site a couple of weeks after that on September 4th, and then after that, Greg Bird from Soil and Water Conservation District and I did another site visit, um, to review the application. The application is to, um, keep, uh, three retaining walls as constructed. Um, wall one is about 60 feet from the ordinary high water level with four feet in height and about 39 feet long. Wall two is about 77 feet from the ordinary high water level, which is also four feet, so it's four feet high, uh, by 57 feet long. And then the third wall is 88 feet from the ordinary high water level, four feet in height, 24 feet length. Wasn't listed on the application, but there was some topographic alteration as well, probably 20 to 30 yards or so of material that was moved. Um, we have three listed conditions if, um, if, uh, if granted, three, three recommended conditions. Those would be, um, number one, a stormwater plan to treat 1.1 inch rain event shall be submitted to the department by December 31st, 2020 to control stormwater runoff in the garage and the road. Infiltration and enhanced vegetation buffer and/or diversion of water from direct runoff into the lake shall be included as part of the plan. Existing vegetation at the shore shall not be mowed or removed. And number three, any remaining disturbed areas shall be completely stabilized by November 15th, 2020. Uh, one caveat on number one, we would, um, also just recommend adding a date for when it would be, uh, should be installed by. That recommended date would be June 1st of 2021. Uh, we did have one email, um, with, um, public testimony. I can read that here if the board would like.
We won't do that right now, but we'll do that a little bit.
Um, this one was from William and Mary Schrobelgen.
We won't do that right, Nick, we won't do that right now, we'll do that, uh, under public comments, so let's hang tight.
Okay, that's fine.
Uh, anything more, Nick?
Uh, nope, that's about it, we can ask, uh, we visited the site.
Uh, that's what I was just gonna do, thank you, uh, if you visited the site, say yes when I call your name, Jason Wienerman?
No.
Uh, Sean Blackburn?
No.
Jason Cron? Jason Cron?
No.
I'm not sure he's answered, yes.
Uh, Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Or Mike Farrell?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Uh, Joe Persky?
Yes.
Uh, and so did I. Um, applicant introductions, I see we have Mr. Carlson and Mr. Bell with us, uh, please state your name and, uh, address for the record.
Good evening, I'm Andrew Carlson, K A R L S E N, and I live at 8157 Paget Avenue Northeast in Otsego, Minnesota.
And this wife, Erin Bell Carlson, I live at the same address, the 8157 Paget Avenue Northeast, Otsego, Minnesota.
And I'm Dan Carlson, Erin's dad and Andrew's father-in-law, 10916 177th Court, Elk River, Minnesota.
Okay, uh, anything you want to add to the staff report?
Um, you know, I, I, I don't, um, I guess I would just ask Nick if there's any sort of adverse environmental effect that he can see, um, or would want to comment on, um, based on the structures as they stand now.
I think we'll, right now, we're doing the staff report and, uh, information for the commission members, we'll leave that for more towards the end, your questions to staff. Um, so for right now, members, um, before we open it to the public hearing, uh, any members have any questions now, or do you want to wait until after the public hearing?
See Chair Andrew Carlson here again, say, if, if you don't mind, um, Nick kind of talked about the grade, and if I could, I'd just like to provide a little more context as to, you know, why it is that we did what we did, just briefly, I can, is that all right?
Yep, I think we're all anxious to hear that.
Okay, um, so we purchased this place back in October of last year, and it was an, as it's sort of purchased, uh, it was purchased through a trust. Um, the, um, the trustees are, are the, um, those, the real property owners prior to the trust, um, were incapacitated, they were old and wanted passed away, and, um, the realtor was a family member, and I'm not at all suggesting that it's her fault or she should have known of this or anything like that, but last October we purchased it, so then the spring rolls around, and, um, the, the first hard melt of the year, um, we learn about this, um, runoff that's essentially pouring into the porch. Uh, Nick top, talked about the grade, but the grade was extremely steep, and there was nothing buffering it, um, from the, from the garage down right into the porch, so it was melting and coming right in, um, as, as the snow dissipated, um, we also learned that there's just a whole bunch of sediment, um, ground soil that had accumulated and kind of piled up against the porch area over the years, um, which to me suggests, you know, there's, there's further concern that the, the hill is moving, and, um, as we're introducing ourselves and getting acquainted with our neighbors, we're learning that this is not an uncommon situation, um, that our neighbors have, have had to deal with, and in fact, um, we live on kind of a peninsula, uh, but one of the neighbors down the way had, um, just earlier that spring, lost half of a, of their bluff, an embankment just literally slid into the lake. Um, so the, the need was, was absolutely there, um, to, for one, to deviate the water around the house to, to keep it from coming into the house. Um, and then two, um, to just slow the, the erosion of the entire hill. Um, you know, our, our garage, as we learned this spring too, um, the, the walls are actually bowing out from the concrete slab, and, and to me, that suggests, you know, that, that the ground is moving as well, so, um, we really felt like we had to do something, and, um, this terrorist idea is, is what we, we developed, um, as the best way to address the erosion, um, in a responsible way. I feel like it, it, it certainly slows the flow of the runoff, uh, and to me, it, it most likely filters it as well, so what ends up going to the lake is probably less than what it was. Um, but what is coming down is most likely cleaner as well, so less sediment going in and that sort of thing, so, um, that's, that's a very brief summary of all we got to where we are today.
Okay, thank you, uh, going back to the members, uh, any questions? Um, there's an echo in going on again, uh, we can cut that out.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky here.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Carlson, you say you had this terrorsine idea, was that engineered?
Well, with my father-in-law, I mean, I don't.
Well, I'm, I'm also Mr. Carlson, so here's, here's what went on, I got ahold of Doug Braun, a local excavator from, uh, Richmond, and he suggested I, and of course, it was right in the middle of the COVID, so Nick, we, we spoke, and, you know, he told me a four-foot wall and, and, um, you know, that, that was okay, and that they were shorthanded, and he was gonna put it in the file. Probably should have come with more, but, you know, we did, we did the first wall and, and knew that it wasn't adequate, um, and I guess it's bad, bad on our part, I, I thought if you stayed under a four-foot wall, which isn't right, um, that, that it was okay. So I, I guess, I guess it's our bad, so apologize for that.
Uh, well, Mr. Braun, did Mr. Braun ask about a permit?
Uh, he, he did, and he told me to talk to Nick, and I did talk to Nick, and Nick put it, uh, he said, if you stay under four feet, you don't need the permit. So, um, uh, that's where, that's where the miscommunication was, but, uh, we, we knew, we knew that first wall had to go in, and after the first wall, uh, you know, then figured out what had to happen after that, but, uh, I guess that's how it came about.
And Mr. Carlson, if you talk about the first wall, are you referring to the lowest one?
Yes.
It, it, isn't that a five-foot wall?
Um, it's, it's, well, it's four foot above the slab, I believe, isn't it, or did anyone measure it, I, I think it's four foot above the slab.
I measured it, uh, the other day, I came up with five feet.
Okay, maybe, maybe with the cap, there's a cap on it, yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here, question for Nick. Um, the board packet says there are SWCD comments, um, but I don't see any in the packet. Um, what, what were the district comments in terms of this site?
Yep, so they should be after the pictures, but if they're not there, I, I can read them aloud, um, from Greg Bird, and it also might pertain to some more of the, um, of a question the applicant had earlier as well, so, um, this is from Greg Bird. "I visited the Andrew Carlson site on Horseshoe Lake Wednesday, September 23rd, and assessment of the site after viewing existing conditions and reviewing the proposed plans is included. Uh, the property is a developed lot which had a vegetated slope towards the, um, towards the existing dwelling prior to the current after-the-fact retaining walls were installed. This slope continues directly to the lake. It is apparent that the stormwater from the road, driveway, and parking area and detached garage are routed to the non-lake side of the existing dwelling and then to the lake. There is very minimal undisturbed native vegetation on the lot. The property did not appear to have any active erosion prior to the retaining wall project being started. The project did cause some erosion during construction, but for the most part, it appears to be stabilized with the sod installed. The proposal to keep the after-the-fact retaining walls to reduce the slope and deal with the stormwater runoff on the non-lake side of the dwelling. Although there are options to deal with the slope and the stormwater runoff, it is a difficult site to manage with minimal space between the dwelling and the detached garage. A recommended option is to allow the retaining walls to stay in place as constructed and ask the applicant to address the stormwater runoff entering the lake. Options could include a buffer of native vegetation along the lake and/or directing the water to an area for treatment. This could include an infiltration basin, swale, or existing depression on the property. Although there does not appear to be any active erosion on the site, retaining walls seem like a reasonable use in conjunction with the main dwelling and detached garage. I reviewed the site based on Section 10.2.14 F1 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Coordinates. This allows for disturbance as its related use to an existing permitted use."
And for the record, um, those comments were not in the packet, so thank you for sharing that with us. Uh, Jason, you have another follow-up?
No, I just, I, it was, I just wanted to make sure we had the district comments as part of the record.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point from commission members?
Uh, Mr. Board, uh, Chairman of the Board here, uh, Rich Blankish. Say, when we, uh, was out there on Monday, looking at, uh, the site, and that was after a recent rainfall, noticed that there was a fair amount of, uh, sediment that got washed onto the sidewalk along the, it's a new sidewalk along the garage headed towards the, uh, steps and going further down, and I'm just wondering, uh, what is the plan to deviate the water away from, that comes off the driveway? And I don't know if that's considered a parking area to the south of the garage. Uh, but it appears that the water is running off the parking area and the driveway and funneling along the garage on the new sidewalk and, and going down the steps towards the, the home.
If, if I could, oh, excuse me, if, if I could comment on that, the, the top of the steps slope, um, away from the house towards the garage, um, and it, so the water shouldn't, well, whoa, I, I say shouldn't go down the steps, it's sloping the, the other way towards the road. At one point, at the door, it goes towards the road.
Mr. Carlson, uh, two, I guess I'll just reference you had, what's your expertise, you seem to know a lot about this, uh, what, what's your expertise?
Well, I'm a, I'm a carpenter by trade, I've been a superintendent for, I've been a carpenter for four years, a superintendent for, um, 25 years, retired now, but, uh.
A superintendent of what?
Um, construction, worked for, you know, in Minneapolis, local contractors, Cross Anderson, Opus, big boys.
The, uh, soil contractors or building contractors?
No, building, building, which, which, as a superintendent, I mean, you deal with all aspects, the soil, the grades, the, all aspects.
Sure. And I guess, uh, to Rich's question, Rich, I'm sorry if I'm interrupting, but when you say, what's the plan? Uh, who's plan, soil and water, uh, Nick, uh, you have a plan or normally we don't let just residents just have plans, some have a plan that's.
Well, if, if I can, if the question's directed to the homeowners, the plan is, is to sod that area. Um, you know, and two, for what it's worth, we have not touched that area, it's, has not been excavated in the least, um, by us. Um, so, so the runoff, I mean, was, if it's, it's not by us, it's not by anything that we've done up there. Is that answered the question?
But, but the area, the area hasn't been worked on because, uh, we're waiting for this, you know? Correct?
This is, uh, Rich Blankish again, uh, it appears that there needs to be some kind of stormwater plan for capturing the water that's going to be coming off the upper level before it gets to your retaining walls? And that's my concern. Is there a plan, should there be a plan developed by the Soil and Water District and then brought forward to us? It seems like this set of documents that we have received this evening is missing a vital, uh, part.
Mr. Chair, Member Blankish, um, that is one of the conditions that we have, so if it were to be approved, they would need to, um, hire a professional to develop a stormwater plan that would be submitted and approved by our office, so that, that's the condition there, that they would have to submit that if this was approved, to address that stormwater.
But the planning commission won't see it anymore.
Right, that, at this point, there is no plan for the stormwater flow, you know, or management at this time, there, there is nothing provided for that.
Typically, those plans are presented to us as part of the package before we do the approval, so I think that's why there's a little bit of confusion. Uh, who's the contractor, uh? If I can.
We're ourselves.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, a question for the applicants. Um, you said that, I believe it was the garage walls that were bowling? Um, we, has there been any foundation damage to the house or any other structures as a result of being on the slope?
No, not that we're aware of.
And then also a second question, um, what did you sod the, the site with, is it just, uh, typical lawn grass mixture?
No, you rolled, you know.
Lawn grass, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Several comments were made, Nick, in relation to conversations you had, do you want to respond to any of that, or?
Yeah, well, as I noted in the staff report, um, and I do remember the conversation, the reason why it was stated that no permit would be required is if it met uh, those three criteria of it not being visible from the lake, being within 20 feet of the structure, and being less than four feet tall. I mean, we had talked on the phone, that's what the, um, that's, that's what the, you know, the intention was going to be, is to keep that, just prevent the water from flowing in on that small portion of the structure, not to extend beyond the structure or up the slope.
Uh, did you know the wall was five feet?
Uh, I had measured it before the, any, that top cap was on there, so that's why it's listed as four feet in the staff report.
Okay, so we might, I don't know if you want to take Commissioner Persky's word for it, or if you want to go back out and measure it. Uh, I'm not sure if we're gonna wait for, you know, complete package plans or not, that's up to the commission, I guess, on how they want to handle that.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Rich Blankish here, I was out there when Mr. Persky, uh, measured that wall, it's five feet. And you could, and the wall appears to be an older wall, not a newer one like the two that are further up towards the garage. Uh, so, I'll vouch for that five-foot measurement I saw it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, um, I had a question too, um, about it saying not, not being visible from the, from the lake, but of course, it is, I don't know if you've, if, if you've been to the shoreline and you see it extends out beyond the building. Um, uh, I, I don't know how that issue is gonna be addressed, or if it's gonna get addressed. Uh, another concern, I don't know if staff has, have we run the numbers on the impervious? Um, looking at the size of the lot, the size of the cabin, the size of the garage, and then of course, the, the poured concrete where the patio is, uh, does that, does that now exceed the impervious level? Because we have the split lot, and, and, and I think that needs to be addressed as well, as it says, the condition of the neighboring mine is undevelopable. Um, uh, you know, where are, where are we with that issue, uh, with regards to the impervious?
Nick?
Yep, so it, it would be under the 25%.
Say that again, Nick?
It, it would be under the 25% coverage, even as constructed with the walls that are there.
With, as I'm looking at the lot right now, um, on, on the, uh, diagram, and I'm looking at the split.
Yep.
It's still, it's under between the garage and the, uh, cabin and the, uh, patio and the walls, that, that is, on the half of lot that I'm, that's under 25%?
Um, I believe I ran the numbers on that, um, although this, if they, if it is, um, in a situation like this, and Jennifer, you might correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this is, um, considered, it's, it's considered the total area of these two.
Uh, but, but they are a split lot, correct, I mean?
Right, they cannot be sold separately from each other.
So Mr. Chair, this is Ken Mossman, it is considered 0.4 acres, so they have almost, uh, about 16,000 square feet that they could cover. Or the, for, I hope, wave, the, is that allowed in the first 20 feet to have a wall of whatever height for, uh, things like that? That seems to be within about 20 feet of the dwelling, isn't it?
10 feet, 12, 10 or 12. 10.
No, so, so the walls do extend beyond, beyond that from the structure, if you measured at a diagonal, it does extend beyond.
So in other words, some of it's legal and some of it's not.
Well, it would only, it would only have been that first wall, that portion on the outside of the structure for that first wall. So yeah, some of it would have been covered, but once it, once it's visible from the lake, um, more than four feet and beyond 20 feet of the structure, so, you know, obviously, some of it would, the small portion of the first wall would have been covered, but beyond that, it would not have been. And that's, that's why it's here.
You know, it, I don't know if it'd be helpful or not, there weren't any pictures to, um, included in the staff report that depicted the, the view from the lake, I have some pictures here, I can try to show you what it looks like, um, because it's really, I mean, difficult to see the wall, quite frankly, from the lake, I can, I can show you here, first one is just the straight-on look here. Um, uh, I don't know if you're gonna be able to see that, does that come through at all?
I'm not seeing.
You, you guys probably have pictures, don't you? I would get that.
This is from the, the side, um, you can barely see the wall way up top there. Again, this is from the lake, and that seems to be the concern. Um, and here's the other side, and this is probably the most visible, um, of all, I don't know to what extent you can, is it, if that's helpful at all or not. But my, my point is if we're, it's a minimal sort of view that you get from the lake of the walls themselves.
Um, any other commission members?
I, I understand it's part of a potential condition, but, uh, you know, our plan is to put in additional trees and other, you know, sorts of vegetation to better obscure the, the walls themselves.
And where is that planned, Mr. Carlson?
Um, well, I, I haven't put it to paper, I mean, again, everything's kind of, you know, on hold at this point, but, um, they would be on the sides of the, of the house. Or of the, of the dwelling. And up top as well.
Um, any other commission members' questions right now?
Yeah, well, Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to, um, bring this up, a lot of good questions, uh, and comments, uh, these are always tough on the after-the-fact applications, obviously. Um, you know, spending a lot of time, I'm very familiar with that shoreline, I've been looking at it for the last 30 years, uh, from the lakeside, there's been, that's a troubled shoreline in general, and so I, I don't know if that helps for context or history for any of the other commission members, but that shoreline has had erosion issues for at, at least the last 20 years, uh, in which there's been a, a lot of, uh, shoreline slides, and so I, I don't know, when I look at this thing, it, to me, it seemed very reasonable considering a troubled shoreline to begin with. Um, obviously, I, I do like the idea of a buffer, something to provide some kind of, uh, sediment catch at the bottom of this thing, kind of like Greg Bird mentioned in, in his comments, but, um, that, again, tough when they're after the fact, because, uh, obviously, um, it, it puts everybody in a really tough spot making a decision. However, this one seems very reasonable to me, particularly considering the shoreline. So for what that's worth, just some comments, I don't know if it's. So for what that's worth, just some comments, I don't know if it's the right, appropriate time, but wanted to make those.
Any other commission members with questions right now?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Jennifer, I, I want to go back to my question about the impervious. Um, because that's a separate lot, are, are, are they allowed to count that lot i- in, in regard to the lot in which the structures are existing? I don't, I don't quite understand how that can be done. They would have that replatted.
Right, yes, um, Commissioner Persky, I just was measuring the lot size. Each of those lots, so they get two tax statements, but separately, they do not meet the minimum lot size. They don't meet 66% of the minimum lot size. So by statute and by, or by rule and by county ordinance, they have to be sold together. So therefore, we do count that whole area when considering their impervious.
Okay. I would. Could another structure be placed on that other lot?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, they may be, they may have the option of putting a accessory structure there if they can meet setbacks. They could not have another cabin or another dwelling.
Okay. And, and then, uh, Mr. Chair, on the previous, uh, photos that we saw, we saw the neighbors had the slope that did not have, uh, the retaining walls. And on that, um, uh, slope, there were a number of trees. Um, do we know, prior to the construction of the wall, were there any trees between the garage and the house? That were removed?
Are you asking, we, we took two trees down.
He's asking Jennifer, uh, Mr. Carlson.
I, I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Chair, and I don't know if, uh, Nick has knowledge on that either.
No, I, I wasn't on the site previously, so I am not, I don't know.
No, Mr. Carlson, but, what, what were you going to say?
No, just two smaller trees that we took down.
Right at, at the house.
And what's the definition of a small?
I mean, they were, I don't know, they were small, they were, I wouldn't, don't even know if you'd really call them trees. They were just like weed trees. They were right up against the, the, the foundation almost. Brush.
Okay. Um, why don't we pause from questions on the commission? Let's go to the public hearing, uh, open up the public hearing. Is there anybody online, uh, to, um, share comments on this item? Anybody online, uh, that wants to share comments on the item? If not, someone please make the motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I do have the one, um, email from.
Uh, we'll do the correspondence, uh, then the letter.
Okay, this is from William and Mary, uh, Schrobel again. They are the neighbors, um, to the north. Um, this is their statement, uh, they installed three tiers of retaining walls, four concrete stairs, and a concrete patio. The following is a list of things that have affected our property at 20939 Eastway Road. On their second tier, there is a section of blocks that were just placed on the ground, no blocks buried for stability. Also, on the second tier, they placed the final block on top of a hollow log that is shared by both properties. When there is a heavy rain, sand and rocks are washed onto our property. Mary fell on the sand coming down to our cabin. We didn't realize there are no setback policies. They can build up, uh, build up to the property line. This is something you might want to address in the future, that this does not happen to others. The shore erosion and washout caused by the rains has now grown to 11 feet back into our yard and is affecting our shoreline as well. This is an enormous concern to us. Their garage is showing large cracks in the block foundation and bowing on the side that the three tiers of patio blocks have been laid and concrete poured. We are leaving for winter and are nervous about what, uh, we will come back to in spring. Sincerely, sincerely, William and Mary, 20939 Eastway Road, Richmond, Minnesota.
Okay, there's no other letters?
No.
Okay, no one else is online to testify, so can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, Jason, when I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Second.
Sean Blackburn, I'll second that motion.
Okay, Jason moves, uh, Sean seconds, close the public hearing. Any discussion? If not, roll call, if I call your name, say hi, R. N., Jason Wienerman.
Hi.
Sean Blackburn.
Hi.
Jason Crown.
Hi.
Ken Mossman.
Hi.
Mike Perrell.
Hi.
Rich Blankish.
Hi.
And the chair votes on it. Uh, public hearing is closed. Um, further discussion? Um.
Uh, Mr. Chair, one quick question. Um, so this is on the Sauk Channel lakes, right?
Yep, that's correct.
Um, have you heard anything from the Sauk River watershed district regarding this?
We have not.
Thank you.
Normally, they like to weigh in on everything, well, why do you think we didn't hear from them?
Um, I, I, I don't know. We, we do notify them, um, for these requests, so, um, they should have been notified for it.
Well, uh, from my perspective, I can just say from seeing the site, uh, you know, just everything about this makes me feel uncomfortable and I don't, I, I don't feel, uh, our obligation is to present a plan. And there, there was no plan, and then the work started happening, and then it was turned in, and now there still really isn't a plan. We find out tonight from Commissioner Persky, it's a five-foot wall, and Commissioner Blankish, um, and no criticism, but this is kind of, um, we've all bought properties. First thing I did every time I bought a property is walk around, talk to the neighbors, uh, is there anything I should know about the property, uh, certainly look for cracks, things like that. And then, of course, if you think and believe that there needs to be some work to get the people there and say, okay, what do you think we should do? How do you think we should do this? So I feel uncomfortable, and I appreciate Jason's comments. It might be better than it was, but how much better could it be if someone with the expertise that knows what they're talking about, uh, could put this all together? And right now, there's a lot we don't know. And so I personally feel uncomfortable with it, but, um, uh, the commission members can weigh in the way they want to weigh in, I guess.
Mr. Chair, Jason, again, and to your point, you know, the one thing that, you know, when looked at the site, the one thing I don't know is, you know, is obviously how well those, the walls are engineered and constructed. There's comments from the neighbors. Yeah, I, I think, a year later than it, but the, the reality is that shoreline's tough. Um, I mean, if you were to go way back, probably should never built the road that the way that they did to that stretch, but it's, it's been a challenging deal, and I, I hope that it's secured well enough because, uh, there's been a, a history of, of blocks breaking away on that side. So anyway, uh.
Can I comment? This is Dan Carlson. Those walls, that, the, what they said about walls just on ground, that's not true. There's footings under those walls, there's eight-inch footings, there's one block buried. Of course, where the wall steps up, the, you know, where, where the hill steps up, you don't need as high of a wall. So there is, there is like a three-foot wall, but there's a footing under it, and there's, they're built, you know, for the specifications on, on the block from the block supplier. So there's no issues, there, there's, I don't know what they're talking about, building a, building a, a wall on a tree, because that didn't happen either.
Well, like I said, I didn't see it, but I didn't, uh, you know, dig anything apart to look either, so, uh, I thought it was, I thought it seemed reasonable considering the site. But my two cents.
Um, okay, let's, unless there's further questions or, um?
Um, actually, uh, Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, um, I'd like to know if Nick has anything to say about the, uh, about the numerous comments and the, uh, runoff and erosion into his property next door.
Yeah, so concerning the runoff and the erosion, um, it's definitely very visible, and I talked with Greg Berg about this on the site when we were out there as well, um, that it's, it's very obvious that there, there is water that flows from around the garage and the road along the property line there. Um, I don't think there's any question that it's more exaggerated now than it was previously due to the fact that that, there is that, there's nowhere for the water to go there, and it creates that kind of channel on, along the lot line there. So, and that's, and that's the real reason for the stormwater plan condition, to make sure that that is captured and, um, you know, infiltrated to the ground properly so that it's not running across the, you know, uh, running across the property and creating erosion problems. So, I mean, it's definitely present there, it's very easy to see where it goes, and that does happen, especially in significant rainfalls.
So we absolutely, we, the, we absolutely plan to address that.
Right, so to be, to be clear, it's actually already part of, even though it's not a specific plan, it is a condition that there will be a plan.
Stormwater, right.
Mr. Chair, one, one last question, Mr. Crown for Nick. Nick, uh, what's the, what's the magic with the 1.1-inch rain event? Um, is, is, is that an appropriate amount or, uh, I'm just, it's a strange number to see.
Yep, so that's the, kind of the standard amount that's used based on rainfall events in the past for basic stormwater plans. This is what we use the majority of the time. Um, if the planning commission feels that, want it to be more or less than that, um, that can be changed, but the 1.1 comes from that standard, um, event that's used for the majority of the stormwater plans that we have submitted to us.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, um, on, on that stormwater plan, on that lower patio, I noticed there's two drains that run into the back of that wall. Where do those drains actually go?
Typically, that would be a question of the staff, but I don't know if Nick is, knows or doesn't know.
Um, I, I do not know. I didn't, didn't, um, see that myself, where those go. I don't know.
So Carlson's, um, where does it go?
There's a drain tile behind the wall, and it, it, uh, it, it comes out onto the patio, and then the drain tile, uh, it doesn't daylight, but there, at the end of the wall, there's rock, so it goes into, into, uh, a rock, you know, a rock bed. And then it's covered with, with, uh, filter fabric and the grass.
Mr. Chair, question for Nick. Um, so if the planning commission makes a recommendation, um, not to approve the after-the-fact permit, um, the applicant would then have to remove all three walls and restore the site?
Yep, so the walls would need to be removed, um, back to what it was before, um, the walls were added. And we do have some oblique imagery to kind of see what that did look like previously. So that would need to be put back, the slope would need to be, uh, graded to the, to the slope and then re-vegetated properly. Um, obviously, we would still, they would need to adhere to all of the erosion control conditions that are in place in the ordinance regardless of whether a permit's required or not, um, to, and then sediment control to prevent sediment from going into the lake. But yeah, it would have to go back, walls would need to be removed, then the slope would need to be put back to the way it was before the walls were added.
And a follow-up to that, um, is this an all-or-nothing proposal, or can we say we approve one wall but not others? What kind of discretion do we have here?
Yep, so the application is to keep the walls as constructed. Um, in the past, the planning commission has done partial approvals where maybe one or two of the walls would be recommended for approval, but, um, that's up to your discretion. You, you could decide to keep all three or just one or two, or, or none at all.
Okay, thank you.
And Jason, uh, those are good questions, and, um, we've all been in situations like this before. The most practical approach, in my opinion, is, uh, that the applicant's consents, the concerns from Commissioner Persky, who ultimately the board will approve or deny this, along with the questions at some of the planning commission, but ultimately, the bigger good, the greater goal, is for God's sakes, let's get a plan. Let's, you know, there's some wisdom here to think about this if you're the applicant. Let's get a plan for your own purposes, for the neighbor's purposes, uh, bring that plan back, uh, to get to Jason's point, showing that, you know, is it going to be a three-foot wall or a four-foot wall or a five-foot wall? Where does the water go? Answer the questions that we've asked, and then it just will be continued for 30 days, but we're all going to have the information that's going to potentially, one, make us feel more comfortable and act on it, and two, long-term, maybe for the first time since you bought the property, actually force you to have a overall, long-term plan that's going to be the best involving soil contractors and, uh, the, um, soil and water and watershed district and people that know and work with this stuff. But that's me being practical, and, um, if I were where you were, that's what I would do, but I'm not where you are. Any reaction to that? I think you're muted.
That's a question for the applicants, right, Mr. Chair?
Uh, correct, then they're muted and he was talking, so.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, I apologize for that. Um, if I'm reading you right, um, I, I certainly don't have a problem with putting together a plan, you know, with a professional that, as it relates to the stormwater drainage. If that's what it is that the, the commission is really concerned about, um, you know, we can absolutely do that. Come back and go through that and, uh, better inform you all, and, um, there'd be the benefit of our peace of mind with a plan as well.
And I think, I think there'd be other issues, the trees, uh, addressing the five-foot wall, you know, uh, the questions about, you know, uh, between staff and going back in the minutes, uh, the question of where that water's going to. There was a number of questions that you could pull together, have the answers to, and then have the plan, but again, that's one member's suggestion. We haven't heard from three members, so we don't know what they're.
Could I make a comment, please? Um, so, maybe the wall is five feet. Um, at this point, is that an issue? I mean, four feet was, was the issue if there was no permit involved. Now, four feet is not, I mean, now that there's a permit in, you know, in, uh, paid for and everything, I don't think four feet is, I think four feet is a, a point that, uh, or five feet is a point that is unnecessary at this point. I mean, and, and maybe I'm wrong, I don't know.
Well, nobody's wrong. Uh, that's your opinion.
Well, does five feet, uh, is, you don't do walls over five feet?
Well, um, I can tell you this, uh, and again, it seems to zigzag around here, but I've seen people have to take away, uh, off a foot, that we're in a lot tougher situation than you, and then suddenly the next one, everybody looks the other way and now, uh, a planning commission member's got to measure and find out it's five feet? Um, that's concerning. So yes, it is a big deal to me, but I'm only one member.
Uh, Mr., Mr. Chair, Jason, a question for Nick. When we're talking about four feet, it's four feet cumulative. So there's one wall that's five feet, but because there's three walls, we're talking an effective wall height of 12 feet, right?
That's correct, it's measured cumulatively on the slope.
So just for the applicant, it's not each wall has to be four feet, it's the cumulative height of the wall. That's one of the concerns I think some of the members may have.
No, under, understood. No, yeah, and I, my position with that too, while I fully, you know, respect that there's rules that are expected to be followed, um, you know, I, I don't, I, I hope that the board has more wisdom to not get caught up into a hyper-technical sort of definition and, you know, finding these violations based on a hyper-technical sort of, uh, view of it. I mean, the obligation is to determine whether or not there's a, a gross, um, adverse in. it. I mean, the obligation is to determine whether or not there's a gross adverse environmental consequence to the existing walls. And I don't believe that at this point, the record would support a showing to deny. But in any event, we, we want to make this right and we would absolutely consider the conditions that were initially laid out that, that Nick had kind of put out there. And I think that the, the comments from the SWCD were helpful and absolutely supported this being, being accepted.
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron with the comments for the, the owners. Andrew, I don't think that you're too far off in your comments there. However, the, the tricky part of this is precedence and we end up seeing some of these after the facts come in. And so, every decision we make sets precedence for, for the next one. And based on decisions that have been made, sometimes those technicalities make a, make a really big difference. So, again, you know, you know, I guess I've stated my opinion on, on the walls. However, the chair makes a, possibly a pretty good recommendation in just getting a few more ducks in a row and, and just going the extra couple steps to make sure that this thing, you know, does get approved. Otherwise, you know, I don't know. It's, it's tough once it gets denied.
Thank you. We agree. Thank you.
Well, if you agree, then before we go through the findings, it's in your pre-voo to ask for an extension to continue it to November 19th.
Okay. And just so I know exactly what it is that would be helpful to the commission, you know, I'd, I'd like your guidance on what exactly it is that you're looking for.
Well, first and foremost, from the staff standpoint, Nick and others, you really get a, need to get a handle on what it did look like before. We have picture, for God's sakes, we got pictures of some poor woman out in Main Prairie Township that had five chickens. So, we should be able to have a picture of what this lot looked like before they did what they did. How does it look like from the shore? We need a lot more staff input. We need to know what the measurement is and all that stuff. So, from our standpoint, I think we need a lot more information. And then from your standpoint, Commissioner Persky seemed to be the most, have the most questions. Commissioner Blankish, second most and me the third most. So, I can tell you from my standpoint, I'd like to see a certified plan. I mean, like, God bless Carlson too. I want it from a soil, I want it from a shoreline guy that does soil work and that knows what they're doing with that. And then I, I, any discussion on the adjacent lot, can we combine them? Why have two lots? Can we require that as a condition? Just combine the lots, makes it simpler for the impervious and everything.
But we are.
Whose we are.
Aren't we?
No, I don't think we're combining lots. We're just saying the other, the second one can't be sold. I think they should be combined as into one lot. It might be a technicality, but if they're going to be treated like one lot, then it should be one lot, in my opinion. And then just get a better handle on this whole erosion thing, what did and didn't happen. And Commissioner Persky, you have some questions?
Mr. Chair, this is Rich Blankish. Can I speak?
Yep, Rich.
Looking at the retaining walls that were put in place, obviously, or at least to me, it seemed like they were there to stabilize that, that slope so that there wouldn't be further failure of the garage foundation on the lakeside of the garage. And if they're going to come back in November, I'd like to see certified drawings or a statement from an engineer that the walls that were constructed have stabilized that slope well enough to keep that garage from sliding down.
Okay. Commissioner Persky, are you with us?
Yes. I'm curious again about the drain. And then if that drain on that lower wall then goes to the neighbor's property line, does the runoff then go on to the neighbor's property?
Well, those are questions that I would think is more of a staff-related question than a applicant, although.
Okay. And, and then also, the stabilization of the wall, the walls there were to stabilize that for the garage and the other structure to get that. But the extension of the walls to the outside of the cabin or the, the house there to, to gain the patio, that was just an added benefit, but, but that exceeded what the availability to do. I mean, we would never have granted that in a permit if they would have come to us and asked for that in the permit. So, that's a little bit concerning. Also, Mr. Doug Brown, I, I'm curious as the excavator, how he was able to go ahead and, and do this without the permit and if he, if he knew what the policy was?
And again, that's a little bit more of a staff kind of question. And is there a license involved? Is he licensed? And those are things that can hopefully be in, in the staff report. So, am I getting the flavor right to the Carlsons that you're, you're open to continuing it then?
We're open to that. Yes, sir.
And then, I guess I would ask Jennifer if you could share an email with Carlsons highlighting the questions that we, and if you don't mind, please copy me on that identifying the bigger picture things. And I can share that with the commission members to make sure and get their input if we're missing something that we, that we make sure and inform the Carlsons of what we'd like to see and what would be in their best interest for them to see when they bring it back in November.
Mr. Chair, one question that I would like explored before the next meeting. Rather than assume the walls are the only alternative, is there another alternative to stabilizing the site that doesn't require all three walls? So, can the site be stabilized using just one wall and deeper rooted vegetation? Are there alternatives to the three walls as installed? That'll be a question that I would have for the site.
And that's a very good question because again, on most of the things that come through here, a 12-foot accumulative, three, three walls, accumulative 12 feet plus, everybody would go nuts. So, and I guess everybody, not so much planning commission members, but certainly some staff. So, we gotta, you gotta kind of have a plan B of doing what Jason just said, in my opinion. So, knowing that they want to continue and I think we're going to identify the questions and everything, a motion would be in order to continue this. I assume there's no legal consequence or anything that's all, they're in favor of it? We have the right to continue?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we certainly can continue it. In this instance, getting feedback and something in writing from an engineer may not happen by, by the November meeting. So, an option would be, a couple options, continue it to the November meeting, which is the 17th, or table it. And then we would bring it back when we have the items that we need.
I like the table it idea. Do the Carlsons have to sign off on that?
What we would do, we'd have to bring it back at the December meeting unless they sign off. So, we have options.
Okay. So, again, just to make it good for everybody, you're not going to want to rush this. You're going to want to have the plan. That would be, I think that would be a better option, to continue it then and not continue it to November to make sure you have all the information.
Mr. Chair, another point, Jason Weiner, another point of consideration for the applicants. We may want to recommend they contact the watershed district directly because I'm pretty sure the district has a permit process as well. So, if the watershed district has questions, it would be good for them to get them all answered at once.
And they certainly can do that, Jason, but I certainly think that Nick could find that out for them too or can make the connection at least, or find out why they didn't respond and then let them know that it's being continued. And, and I guess we'd like them to respond. They respond to everything else, so I don't, I don't know why they wouldn't. So, then knowing, and Jennifer makes some good points, then a motion to table it would be in order.
Mr. Chair, so if this is the correct motion, I motion we table it until the December regular planning commission meeting?
It wouldn't be a date. It would just be tabling it. And then in November, we would do something different if we needed to, Jennifer, right, or December?
Correct. If you table it, it's not to a specific date and we will bring it back when we have the needed materials. We'll redo the public notice and everything. So, don't, date is needed if you table it.
So, I modify my motion to tape that we just, the motion now is we just table this item.
Mr. Chair, Mike Perle, I'd like to second it.
Okay. Motion's been made by Jason, seconded by Mike to table this item. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. There is one thing. Before we redo this, I want every board member to be there. We've had several people going on and on and on about this that never went to the site. So, they could not, they can look at the pictures. It doesn't give you the actual what was there. And I'm fine with extending this here to another next meeting and then they can have a plan. But then I want every board member to go there and look at it. Okay?
I think that's a fair, and normally we do. I think most of us were there, but we're the couple that couldn't make, probably make a point of getting there before we consider it again. So, motion's been seconded. Any further discussion? If not, when I call your name, if you're for tabling it, say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Jason Weiner?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Cron?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perle?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So, item two has been tabled and we'll get the information and bring it back. Agenda item three, consider a permit by Lyndon Martin Bruton. Jennifer, you want to give the staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This is a request to operate a motor vehicle repair business accessory to a residential use in the A160 zoning district. This property is in section 32 of Raymond Township located on County Road 18 with a Bruton address. So, Lyndon Martin has a motor vehicle repair business. He's been operating on the property, unaware that a permit was needed. So, in addition to doing the motor vehicle repair, he'd also like to get a dealer's license in order to sell a number of vehicles. And that triggers the need for the county to sign off on a dealer's license to indicate that the site is in compliance with local zoning laws. So, that's why we're here to get the site permitted in compliance with doing the motor vehicle repair. And that allows a small number of vehicles to be for sale on the site as well. So, this property, like I said, it's off County Road 18. What they, they have an existing shop there that they use. They did do an addition onto it with some office space about a year ago. As far as hazardous waste goes, they do have a plan in place for their used oil. They store that in barrels and transport it to a proper facility where it's burned. And parking is met. The parking spaces were identified on their plan. They're limited, no more than three vehicles for sale at any time and then no more than seven vehicles maybe on the lot outside of a building at any time. So, Mr. Martin is aware of all this. The trash disposal dumpsters are located behind the shop. Lighting is not an issue. Water and sewer management. They do have the shop hooked up to septic system on the property and that is in compliance, less than five years old. There's also a floor drain in the shop and that does need to be hooked up to a holding tank. So, Mr. Martin did have a design submitted earlier this week for a holding tank for the shop and he'll get that installed. The sign on the property does need to be moved back about 15 feet to meet the right of voice setback. The site is actually nine acres right now. And to have motor vehicle repair in an ag district, you need 10 acres. So, Mr. Martin has spoken with the neighbor and is willing to sell him an acre so he gets to the 10 acres so that this can be a properly permitted site. So, that is also added as a condition on the permit. In the comprehensive plan, this falls in the ag future land use district. So, I do have four proposed conditions. If the planning commission recommends approval, we would suggest conditions stating the accessibility code needs to be met. So, for that, we need confirmation from a licensed building official to show that the existing building needs accessibility code. We'd like that submitted by December 31st of 2020. Complete the administrative subdivision to attach one acre of land by December 31st of 2020. Relocate the sign to meet setback requirements by November 30th, 2020. And then get the holding tank installed for the floor drain by December 31st, 2020. And when you get to the public hearing, Mr. Chair, I do have one email.
Got it. And as long as we're on the recommended commissions, Jennifer, why are those dates, magical dates? They're kind of short-term dates.
Sure, Mr. Chair. Partly because the business is already existing. So, we were thinking that these should get completed sooner than later. The one I guess we would push for the most would be number four, being that that holding tank currently, or the floor drain is currently discharging to the ground surface. That one, we feel more strongly that that should get done sooner. We certainly are open to discussions if you want to extend any of the other ones.
I, I just want to make sure that they're reasonable expectations. Two months probably to get a tank installed would be reasonable. I don't know that they are or aren't. I'm just questioning that. So, we can talk about that. And then the site visit, you said to be done. I assume you did the site visit?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I completed that on Monday.
Okay. And then staff members, if you were on site, say yes when I call your name? Jason Weiner?
No.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Jason Cron?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Perle?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Joel Persky?
Yes.
And I was there. Applicant introductions. It looks like Mr. Martin's with us. Please state your name and address for the record. Mr. Martin, you're muted. Looks like you're still muted.
There, I'm with you. Lyndon Martin. The address is 477-83, County Road 18, Bruton, Minnesota, 56316. And also with us tonight is my wife, Geraldine Martin.
Welcome. Anything you want to add to the staff report?
I know. It was very well explained and I think the thing is there that I know of, unless there's, yes, we started this repair business. I felt like I wanted to start a business here at home and, but obviously didn't realize we needed a conditional use permit to start. Now, as we are expanding or wanting a dealer's license, I'm very open to getting everything in order that we can.
Okay. Item discussion among members. Any questions right now? Any members have?
Mr. Chair, Jason Weiner, and just one quick question on that holding tank condition. So, the county board's going to meet October 20th to act on this recommendation. That will give you about two months to put in the holding tank. I, I'm not a septic installer. I don't know how long that would take. Would two months be adequate time for you to meet that condition?
Mr. Martin, you're muted again. Mr. Martin, you're muted again. You need to, there you go.
There. The only condition that I wouldn't be able to make is, in the condition there, the tanks would be not available, I would maybe not be able to get a tank within like six weeks or so, so that would be the issue, is that if the tank wasn't available, otherwise, I'm under the understanding, I can also install the tank by myself, so I should be able to get digging done, and get the inspection, and get the tank, if the tank is available.
Thank you.
Which was a question I kind of raised earlier, how do we address that, we want you to do it as quickly as we can. Do we, do we say December 31st, 2020, unless the tank isn't available, or do we say something to that degree? Because I don't sense if Mr. Martin doesn't want to comply, he'll comply if he can get the tank, you can start looking for a tank tonight already if you want to, you don't have to wait for the county board meeting to do that, you don't maybe want to buy the tank, but certainly could locate the tank.
Mr. Chair, I do think that would be a fair amendment to state unless a tank is not available for purchase.
So that would give a little wiggle room if you needed. Okay, anything else, Mr. Martin, you want to add, or?
No, that sounds very reasonable, I, that would be the only condition, instead, if we could have the clause in there that says that if the tank isn't available, that I can put it in as soon as I get it, I think that should work, the only thing that could be an issue is backfilling, we all know that December 31st, things get pretty hard, so, but if I could cover the soil so that it doesn't, you know, freeze, probably a way to work around it, but if we can have an extension that's kind of out there, that would help me out, so, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. We'll open the public hearing, is there anybody online or here, I don't see anybody here, there's somebody in the other room or online to weigh in on this, not be the time to say something? Anybody here that wants to say something about the site?
Mr. Chair, I just have the one email we received.
Yep, why don't you read that?
So this states, I just wanted to send an unsolicited comment to Lyndon Martin's CUP, as a neighbor, Lyndon and his family are wonderful stewards of our community, as a business, motor vehicle repair business is a need in our community, and the location is a good one in terms of servicing the surrounding farmers and communities, please support his request, sign Lucas Stojstrom.
Okay. With hearing no one else here or online that wants to say anything, a motion to close the public hearing would be in order?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, motion to close the public hearing.
This is Rich, I'll second that.
Okay, Jason moved, and Rich seconded to close the public hearing, any discussion on that? If not, if you're in favor, that's a aye, when I say your name, and say no if you're not. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Cron?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, public hearing is closed, discussion by members?
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Martin, I, you know, I like your shot there, just a quick question about your business, you know, I saw the repairables you have out there, but is it going to be the majority of the work to do repairables, or are you doing also auto repair as far as, you know, engine work, transmissions, all types of other types of auto repair as well?
In response to that, I, I do, my main focus is bodywork, which would include repairables, and also insurance work or customer work, but on the side, there, we do brakes, mechanical work, transmissions, mostly just swapping, you know, but the mechanical is there, it's just as a second.
Okay.
Second line.
And then the other question is to Jennifer, just to clarify with the, with the parking, you know, he's got an ag business in there too, I would think that that would excuse the ag vehicles, but the total number of vehicles that he has is only seven, is that all that can be there?
Mr. Chair, that's correct, seven vehicles are allowed outside of a building, and I did talk with Mr. Martin about that, it would not include his own vehicles, of course, and it wouldn't include the farm equipment, but basically, vehicles there for the purpose of being serviced or repairables, seven is the limit outside of a building, if he had more, he could put them in a building.
Okay, because just for his, I would imagine that that could be a bit problematic, so that, just so, you know, know that you could have more vehicles, but they would have to be then inside in a garage, is that correct, Jennifer?
Yes, that's correct, and I.
Something like that, okay.
Yep, and Lyndon and I talked about that.
Because I understand the nature of business, you've got people coming and going, they want to get something done, another guy comes in, neighbor comes in, and pretty soon you got a dozen vehicles sitting there, and of course, you want to, you know, accommodate your neighbors, and it's hard to know, but just be aware of that.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment, Mr. Chair, so if it is going to be a challenge to manage, it's something I'm going to try hard to manage, and also, I have a shed, there's, there's heifers that are going to empty out of the shed, I would plan to put those vehicles that are extra in that shed, to try to manage my seven vehicles outside and under the roof, and, yeah, also at the time, I do have like four of my own vehicles right now, so those are exempt, I understand.
Any other discussion, members? If not, we'll do the findings. Number one, is the proposal consistent with existing county ordinance, specify applicable sections of the ordinance?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, a motor vehicle repair accessory is allowed as a conditional use permit in the A-160 zoning district under land use zoning ordinance 439, section 4.8, 6.42, and 9.1.5.
Number two, are there any other standards, rules, requirements that the proposal must meet?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here, the four proposed conditions identified in the staff report with the amendment to the fourth, that the date is pending the ability to acquire an appropriate holding tank.
Three, is a proposed use compatible with present and future land uses in the area, can it be separated by distance screening or adjacent land uses?
Mr. Chair, I think considering the location, it's in good shape, this is Jason Cron, consistent.
Four, are there environmental concerns, groundwater, surface water, air quality, wellhead protection, that should be addressed as part of this proposal?
Mr. Chair, with the installation of the holding tank, that will address the groundwater concerns, and the other concerns are not significant on the site.
Five, has information been provided regarding the impact property values in the area?
Mr. Chair.
Sean Blackburn.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Economic impact has not been part of this equation or this variance request.
Okay, what potential public, number six, what potential public health, safety, traffic generation impacts will the proposal have in relation to the area and the capability of roads serving the area?
Mr. Chair, this is Rich again, should be minimum 10 on.
Seven, how does a proposal affect general health, safety, welfare of the residents?
Mr. Chair, minimally, Jason Cron.
Eight, does a proposal conform to the goals and objectives the county comprehensive plan, specify which goals and objectives?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron again, I believe it does, under the business goals, actually, business goal one, increasing the county's regional prosperity by being globally competitive in a business-friendly region, and also business goal number four, which is enhancing the ability of local retail and commercial business to sustain small cities and rural town sites.
Nine, how does a proposal affect existing public services, schools, parks, streets, utilities?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, minimal effect on that.
Ten, has the applicant provided financial assurance, guarantee, recollection, or cleanup?
Mr. Chair, Rich again, not applicable, really.
Eleven, other issues pertinent to this matter? I would just like to say that we're basing our decision on information that we provided from staff, to our best knowledge. Okay, with that, a motion would be in order?
Mr. Chair, Mike Perrell, I'd like to make a motion to approve with the four conditions, with condition four, with the amendment.
Sir, second.
Rich, I'll second that.
Motion's made by Mike, second by Rich, to recommend approval to the county board October 20th board meeting, any discussion? If not, when I call your name, if you're for, say aye, if you're opposed, say nay. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Cron?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, recommendations made to the county board to approve other proposals. Thank you to Martin's, good luck. Item number four. We have interim use permit submitted by Tim and Sandy Salter, Fairmont, Minnesota, trying to fill out your staff report.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is a request for an interim use permit submitted by Tim and Sandy Salter of Fairmont, the request is to operate a vacation private home rental in the R1 zoning district, this property is on Long Lake, right off Highway 22 in Eden Lake Township. So this is an existing home built back in 1950, that they have just acquired and are seeking to rent out. When we look at the surrounding area, there is a registered feedlot about 1,000 feet to the southeast, but feedlot setbacks are met, there is a narrow pan of wetland along the lake, which will not be impacted with the proposal. Looking at the area as a whole, it's largely a lake shore residential to the east and west, there's a campground to, a couple of campgrounds to the north on Long Lake, and there's also a residential PUD that you see there to the west, and then of course, to the south, it's agricultural land. So the applicants did provide a water test for nitrates and bacteria, and those are acceptable. They have a four-bedroom home there, so the occupancy, they would be allowed as 10 guests. They do provide space for four off-street parking spots, there's plenty of room on the property for parking, but they specifically identified four spaces there, the septic system was certified in 2018, and that's in compliance. Per ordinance, the licensee shall keep a report detailing the use of who's renting out the home, and then provide that to the county if requested. If the interim use permit is approved, then the property owner will need to obtain a lodging license from the department before renting out the home, our environmental health staff that do that licensing, they have been out to the property and visited with the owners, so they're aware of the things they'll need to do to, to obtain that license. So if the planning commission were to recommend approval, the suggested conditions would be to set an expiration date, they're requesting it to be a ten-year permit, also the condition stating the maximum occupancy shall be 10 people, stating that the applicant shall obtain the lodging license before renting out the home, requiring a flow measurement device be installed, if they don't already have one, and then flow measurement readings and monitoring of the system shall be recorded each month, and then records made available to the department upon request. And then last condition we suggest is keeping that report detailing the use of the home by recording the name, address, phone number, and vehicle license number of all guests using the property, and then provide a copy of that to the department upon request. And I also have one letter that I received from the public when you get to the hearing.
Thank you, Jennifer. Members, if you were at the site, when I call your name, say yes, if you weren't, say no. Jason Wienerman?
No.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Jason Cron?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Perrell?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Joel Persky? Joel Persky?
That's a yes, Mr. Chair.
And I was there. Applicant introductions, I understand that the Salters had a hard time getting on line with, or on audio, are you with us?
We actually got back online on our phones, hopefully you can see and hear us now.
Yep, can see you and can hear you, welcome, state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, my name is Sandy Salter, my address is 458 Kings Road in Fairmont, Minnesota.
I'm Tim Salter, same address, and our address here is 18034 State Highway 22.
Richmond.
Correct.
Okay, anything you want to add to the staff report?
No, we're just excited to have purchased this property, it's been kind of a family dream to have a lake home, we both had one growing up, and then we lost them about 10 years ago, and so we're just excited, the people here are very friendly, we're looking forward to making a lot of family memories here, but during this time, we're just finding that it's necessary to unfortunately rent out for a little while, so that we can create a little bit of extra income to help maintain and pay for the property right now. Also, I've spoken with our new neighbor, Bruce, who bought two acres next, next door to us, I believe it's to the west, and he was very gracious about it, and he understood why we were doing this, and so, he's our most immediate neighbor, and so I've spoken with him, and kind of told him of the situation as well.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing, is there anybody here or in the other room, or on, with us electronically that want to say anything? Is there anyone that wants to give input on this item? If not, motion, sorry, the letter, let's hear the letter.
Sure, this email was received from Edward Lukens, we received notice for the interim use permit for Tim and Sandy Salter to operate a vacation rental, since I believe a person should be able to do what they please with their property, I do have some reservations about this, the house is on Lot 2, but they include Lot 3 in the permit, why? Being the owner, I know it's a financial advantage to combine the two lots, but it seems they don't, do not want to do that, and have more plans for Lot 3 that are not being mentioned at this time, they would already have the permit for Lot 3 and see no reason to allow 10 or more campers to rent spots and have a mini resort, this we would object to, but if it's only to rent out the home on Lot 2 and not do anything on Lot 3, for up to 10 people, which I think is probably more than the sewer can handle, if it was not a vacation home, then we have no objections, since this is unclear and vague, I have to object unless you have more information why Lot 3 is listed in their plans. I think we need more information, Edward Lukens, 18159 Don Haven Road, Richmond, Minnesota. And I did respond to Mr. Lukens to And I did respond to Mr. Lukens to let him know that RVs are not allowed to be part of a vacation home, and that an RV park is not part of the plans at all.
Do we know why Lot 3 was included, or can the Salters?
Sure. Lot 3 is part of the four acres that we purchased, and actually, our better lake access is off of Lot 3, so that's why both are included, because we have a flat lake access on that lot, but a very steep lake access on Lot 2.
And there's no plans for putting any, anything else on Lot 3 at this time?
It's just open land, and that's the way we intend to leave it.
And just to be clear, Jennifer, they couldn't if they wanted to?
Mr. Chair, Lot 3 is a separate parcel. This was actually planted about a year or two ago. So if they wanted to, I mean, a home could be, they could sell Lot 3, and somebody could build on it. But as part of this request, they couldn't, you know, put an RV park or anything there.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Jennifer, Lot 3, are you referring to the east?
Correct, that's to the east.
And then, is this neighbor Bruce, the Lot 4, the next lot with the, with the, I think the stable we approved a while ago, does that belong to the neighbor they had mentioned?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay. No other letters or emails. Nobody's online or in the room. So a motion to close the public hearing would be in order?
Jason Cron makes a motion to close public hearing.
Jason Wienerman seconds.
Okay. Jason Dool will wait in and make a motion to close public hearing. Any discussion? If not, if you're in favor of closing the public hearing, say yes. If not, say no. Jason Wienerman?
Yes.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Jason Cron?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Paul? Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
The chair votes aye. Public hearing is closed. Any questions, discussion, members?
I have a question. I'm trying to remember exactly where it was located. I think it is on the same lot that the house is located on. It appeared that somebody was trying to build a deck on that very steep bank. Could see, looked like a proposed access down to it, was staked out with some rebar that had been pounded into the ground. Could the owners answer in regards to what that is?
Sure. Actually, that's on Bruce's property. I was actually just talking to him about it this past week. He's trying to create some stairs or steps down to the lake.
Okay, is staff aware of this?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blankish, I don't know if staff is aware of it. I am not. I'm not sure if other staff are aware of it, but I can check into it.
So that's on Lot 1, which we do not own.
Yeah, that's fine. I, you know, when we were out there looking, and it's, couldn't tell whose lot it was on to be honest with you, so. But yeah, staff will take a check, take a look at it, see what's going on there.
And just make sure that I saw that, and I guess I didn't know what it was either, but just make sure that it's compliance, I guess.
Yep.
Any other questions? If not, let's do the findings. Number one, is the proposal consistent with existing county ordinances?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, yes, it is. It's consistent with the land use and zoning ordinance number 439, sections 4.18, 6.60, and 9.9.6B, with private vacation home rentals allowed in R1 district.
Number two, are there any other standards, rules, requirements proposal must meet?
Mr. Chair, this is Rich Blankish. Yes, there's five proposed conditions that they need to meet.
Three, is the proposed use compatible with the present future land uses in the area? Can it be separated by distance for screening?
Oops, sorry. Mr. Chair, Jason Cron had trouble with my mute there. It is consistent. There's some other vacation rentals on Channel Lakes, and this is actually a really nice spot for one.
Number four, are there environmental concerns that should be addressed as part of the proposed?
Some of the septic is addressed in the conditions.
Five, has information been provided regarding property values?
Your chair, no, it has not been provided.
Six, what potential public health, safety, traffic generation impacts will the proposal have?
Mr. Chair, minimal.
Seven, how does the proposal affect general health, safety, welfare of the residents?
Mr. Chair, minimal. This is Rich Blankish.
Eight, does the proposal conform to the goals and objectives of County Comprehensive Plan?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, it does conform to the future land use map in agricultural area with the natural resources overlay. As far as our goals and objectives, that would fall under the business category, and business goals number three, to acknowledge tourism's economic value and the prospective contribution of the industry to both the diversity of the county economic base and the potential for growth.
Nine, how does the proposal affect existing public services, facilities, including schools, parks, streets, utilities?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, I think once again, minimal impact.
And has the applicant provided financial assurance?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, that's not applicable in this instance.
Number 11, issues pertinent to the matter, other issues. One, I would say, again, we're acting on the information we've been given, to our knowledge from staff. And two, I would say that, is it Lot 4, no activity can occur on that second lot related to this proposal?
Mr. Chair, can I just clarify on that? Was that Lot, you're talking about Lot 3?
Was it 3 or 4?
Lot 3 is the lot, their adjacent lot they own to the east.
Okay. Whichever lot it is, that's making.
Mr. Chair, there can be activity, just not, just not RVs and things like that, because I think they plan to use that as their lake access.
Correct. No activity, meaning no RVs, no rentals or things like that. That's good clarification, Jason. Thank you. With that, a motion would be in order?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, I'll make a motion to recommend approval with the five conditions.
And I will second that. That's rich.
Motion's been made by Jason, second by Rich to recommend approval of the county board for the October 20th meeting. Any discussion on that motion? If not, when I call your name, if you're for it, say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Cron?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Recommendations made to county board to recommend approval. Thank you. Good luck. Agenda item number five, consider rezoning request submitted by Jerry Jerome Humbert. Painesville, Jen will give the staff report.
Okay, thank you. This is a rezoning request. Mr. Humbert is, Mr. Humbert, on behalf of JC Humb Inc., is requesting to rezone about one acre from R5 to commercial. This property is located right on Highway 55 in section 21 of Painesville Township. And so part of this property is already zoned commercial, and what they're seeking to do is basically what they would make the entire property commercial with this rezoning. If it's approved, the applicant plans to construct a commercial building and store a commercial equipment. It actually lives on the parcel to the south, so he looks right adjacent to this. As you can see, this is really a mixture of zoning in the area. With it being on Highway 55, you have a number of commercial uses. There also are a few homes, and as you go west of here, there's more residential homes. It's not in any overlay districts or areas of concern. Right now, the property would be allowed one home, but if the rezoning is approved and it all becomes commercial, then no homes would be allowed. On the future land use map, this is in the transition area. We didn't run a lease score on this because it's not ag right now, so it wasn't really applicable. The township did review this. They recommended approval of the rezoning. That was included in your packets. The property to the west of this is actually the Painesville Town Hall and the hockey rink there. So the township is close by. That's really all I have to summarize this request, and I did receive one letter for this one as well.
Okay. The, if you visit the site when I call your name, say yes. If you didn't, say no. Jason Wienerman?
No.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Jason Cron?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Perrell?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Commissioner Persky?
Yes.
And I visited the site. The applicant contacted us. He's available by phone because of his limited, you know, where he's at and everything. We'll have to call him if there's any questions that are directed towards him. And so he is not directly with us, but he's accessible. Any discussion from the commission members on this one at this point? Any questions or anything?
Actually, one question. I honestly always thought that was in the city. So driving by that, that property, how close is the city line to, to that property?
I actually know that because I live there. It's over by where the old Tom Thumb was, where that roofing business is coming up, what we call the John Deere Road. I don't even know what the number is. That's where the city, city line is.
Interesting. Learned something new in this process.
Yep. Any other questions right now? Otherwise, we'll go to the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Anybody here or in the other room? I shouldn't say here. If you're here, I know you'd be here. Anybody in the other room or online that wants to say something about this? Is there anybody here in the other room or online that want to give input? Why don't we hear the letter?
Okay, sure. This dates to whom it may concern. This communication is in regard to the rezoning request for Jerome Humbert. I was the chair of the Painesville Zoning Committee several years ago, where we addressed all existing zoning in the township. At that time, there was a large strip identified and zone commercial along the Highway 55 corridor. Subsequent to that, the township elected to make changes to that corridor with the comment that if someone wishes to be rezoned to commercial, then they can make that request. My opinion is this makes things cumbersome and expensive for property owners to be put through that process. The bottom line is, based upon my experience and past involvement, I fully support this zone change request. Signed, Patrick Flanders.
With no one else wanting to give input, motion to close public hearing.
Mr. Chair, you are on mute.
Because, because somebody keeps putting me on mute, not me, so I don't even know I'm on mute. Thank you. A motion would be in order to close public hearing.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, so moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Jason Cron.
Jason Crew come through again. Any discussion on that? If not, motion to close the public hearing. If you're for it, say aye. Opposed, nay. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn? Sean? Are you with us, Sean? I'll come back to you. Jason?
Yes, aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Sean Blackburn, are you with us? You're not on the screen. I'm not sure what happened there, so we'll just go with what we got. Motion's approved, close the public hearing. Discussion on the item.
Mr. Chair, back, Jason, did you say that that property was outside the city, actually?
It is outside the city. I just, you know, had driven past that property for years and just assumed it was by the city, so.
And I did too. Mr. Chair, just a question then. Is there any issue then, when this goes commercial, is it going to be public from the water, correct?
It's going to be, what, Commissioner Persky? I didn't hear that last part.
Public sewer and water, utilities, public utilities.
No, there's no city or water sewer, no.
There are not. There is, there's none then.
There's no accessibility, no.
Oh, okay. Okay, just with the commercial that's out there, I was thinking that, that perhaps there was. Does that present an issue for the city?
Again, only because I served on the council and I'm familiar with the area. It's always been that way. It's kind of in the, with the dealership, auto dealership, farmer restaurant, and then Mr. Humbert's house, and then this is going to be a storage shed, so there won't be water or anything like that. I don't think it's an issue, obviously, with the township, who recommended approval, or the city, because there, I don't know what that would be, a solid 2,500 feet or more from the city limit.
Okay. I'm just curious, you know, because of what, you know, commercial would be going in there, if they'll be able to handle the septic. Of course, that would act all come out in the planning, correct?
Right, and then there's, my knowledge from, based on the plans, it's strictly a storage shed. There's no water sewer.
Okay.
There's not going to be any of that.
All right.
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. So the city, that's a hockey rink to the west of the site?
Correct.
Do there, are there any setbacks required for construction in the commercial area from the property lines?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Wienerman, yes, the setback is 20 feet from property lines.
Okay, thank you.
And then there is a solar garden to the south. If I got my directions right?
Mr. Chair, the township has discussed putting a solar garden to the north and west. Is that what you're talking about?
I'm sorry, yes.
Township, yeah, they have discussed that. I don't know if that's been finalized yet.
I think it is. I said it's there. I don't know if it's there, but it's going to be there.
Sure.
The other statements. Otherwise, we'll do the findings. Number one, does the proposal conform to County's comprehensive plan?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, I believe it does, under the business goals and, and under the comprehensive plan, the newer plan I particularly like, and now where to go on me. It is, I'm sorry, I had it right in front of me, and now I lost it. But as regarding, commercial uses should be oriented principally around key intersections and commercial nodes. Now, that's under the major transportation corridor policies.
Okay. Number two, is the proposed rezoning compatible with the present future land uses in the area?
Mr. Chair, that, this area, Jason Cron again, is, is very mixed, so I'd say it's compatible.
Three, are there environmental concerns that should be considered as part of the rezoning request?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. Commissioner Persky brought up the concern about water and sewer on the site. While this site may not require any additional water and sewer, that doesn't mean future options won't, so it is. So it is something that may be an influence on future development to the area.
Four, has information been provided regarding the property values?
Mr. Chair, no, it has not. This is Rich.
Five, is there potential for public health safety traffic generation impacts based on the proposal rezoned?
Again, this is Rich, no, there is not.
Six, how does the rezoning affect existing public services, facilities, and schools, parks, streets, utilities?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, it's, it's located next to the, the hockey arena and, and that park area, but, you know, based on this use, not going to make much of a difference.
Number seven, other issues pertinent to the matter. Again, we're basing our decision based on the information we've received from staff through the best of our knowledge.
Mr. Chair, Jason Weinerman here. One question on that, just something I was thinking about. We've identified this is living outside of the city of Painesville. Does anyone know, does the city have any plans to annex this area in the future?
Again, only because I served on the council for eight years and we had discussions about, we did have identified joint annexation areas and what have you. There's never been any interest by the businesses, which included the restaurant at the time, the dealership, the, the whole Hilltop Plaza, where the restaurant and the gas station and everything is. There's never been any interest or request to do that, and so that never was identified as a proposed amixed area.
Okay, thank you.
During the time that I was there, or that I'm aware of, and I think I know, but I'm not positive, but I haven't heard nothing.
Mr. Chair, I can comment that city and township have adopted an orderly annexation agreement, which I'm sure you're aware of, and that boundary hasn't changed, and this property is not in their annexation boundary.
So with that, a motion would be in order?
Mr. Chair, Jason, I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval. And actually, I'm going back to look, I don't believe there's any conditions. So, yeah, recommend approval with no conditions.
This is Rich Blankish, I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made, second. Any discussion to recommend approval, the county board for October 20th meeting? Any discussion? If not, instead of saying aye, should we say ziggy zaggy or something different, or should we stick, well, let's stick with the aye. So if you're in favor of the motion, say aye when I call your name. If you're not, say nay. Jason Weinerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Cron?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perrell?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion's been recommended to approve, the county board approve Mr. Humbert's proposal. Item number six, to consider rezoning requests submitted by Todd and Rachel Schwartz. Holding for it? Jennifer will give the staff report.
Yes, this request is to rezon approximately 30 acres from agricultural 40 to residential 10. This property is in Section 3 of Brockway Township, located on 440th Street, Holding So it is a 30-acre parcel in total, and they're asking to go to R10. The property has frontage on 440th Street, which is a township road. Mostly grassland, some woods to the south, in the southeast corner. There is quite a bit of slope from the north to the south. Let's see, the area is a mixture of residential and feedlots. So there are about 29 homes within a half a mile, and three registered feedlots with over 10 animal units, also another three that have less than 10 animal units. That's within a half a mile of the property. The zoning in this area is all entirely A40, however, there's a residential development to the north, you can see, called Rock Line, and that development was platted in 1977, which was before county zoning. So if the, currently they have one home, that's all they're allowed. If they, if the rezoning is approved, three homes could possibly be, be platted there on 30 acres. Or if they chose to do a cluster development and do smaller lots, they could potentially get five lots there. On the comp plan, this is in the agricultural rural area on the future land use map. We did run the least a score, that came back at 49.45, which is below the threshold of 65. Basically, they got about half the possible points for the land evaluation, so looking at the soils, they got only about half the points, and then they also got about half the possible points for site assessment, looking at the surrounding area. Brockway Township approved the request, and that's included in your packets. And that is all I have right now, Mr. Chair, and I do have one letter on this one as well.
Members visited the site, that when I call your name, say yes, say no if you didn't. Jason Weinerman?
No.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Jason Cron?
Yes.
Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Perrell?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Commissioner Persky?
Yes.
And I was there. Jennifer, were you there? This is to be done.
Mr. Chair, I did not have a chance to get there.
So applicant introductions, are the Schwartzes with us?
Yes, we are.
Okay, can you please state your name or names for the record with your address?
I'm Todd, she's Rachel, we're the Schwartzes, 10107 440th Street.
Holding for it?
Correct.
Anything you want to add to the staff report?
What we plan on doing is just dividing the land into two 15-acre lots. So our son plans to buy our home, and then we want to build a patio house, so he'll be around to help take care of us when we get older.
I'm, my ankles, I, I don't have an ankle in my right foot. My left foot is, got arthritis and really bad, so that's kind of our agenda.
Okay. Any questions or comments from members?
Mr. Chair, Jason Weinerman here, just a quick question. So we have a 30-acre parcel, we're dividing it into R10, which would allow them to put three lots on it. If they do the 15, so if they split into two 15-acre parcels, do those 15-acre parcels become R10, or how does that work, Jennifer?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Weinerman, if the rezoning is approved and they choose to do two 15-acre lots, the zoning stays R10. So it'll still be R10, they'll just each have a 15-acre lot, and they'll each have one and a half building entitlements, so they wouldn't be able to subdivide those with 15 acres under the R10. They would be R10.
Could they subdivide, could one of the landowners then subdivide a 15 into a 10 and a 5?
Technically, if the other landlord was willing to restrict their five acres and transfer a half of a building credit, they could do a 10 and a 5.
Okay, all right, just thinking it out, thank you.
And Jennifer, is there something that we could do as a condition that wouldn't allow that?
No, there is not. We're not able to put conditions on rezonings.
Okay.
Jennifer, I have a couple of questions for the Schwartzes. Todd and Rachel, I mean, do you have a garage there? Do you do anything commercial out of there, or is that just for your own hobby? Maybe you got to rent some race cars and do some auto repair for yourself?
What we do is, my boy is in demolition derbies, and that's all we do, is we just strip cars apart if, if, if they're worthy of a demolition. And this year has not been, we don't go anywhere because we can't.
Okay. And, and, and Mr. Schwartz, I have no problem, I think that can be a lot of fun and great hobby. However, on the, on the aerial, it appeared that there might be a couple abandoned vehicles out there, further out away from the garage, out in the woods that way. I guess, I have no trouble with the vehicles you're using, but if there are any out there that are not going to be used potentially, I guess I would like to see them removed. Are there any out there?
We do have some out in the woods that were actually waiting for the price of the metal to go up, and then they will be gone.
Yeah, and, and, and of course, we don't know about that price, because, you know, the market, the way it is, you know, the market just isn't there for, for iron right now. Is there any chance we could put a deadline when those would, could be removed?
Commissioner Persky, are you asking me?
Well, I'm asking both Mr. Schwartz and you, yes.
Why don't we start with staff first? Can we require them?
You know, not, as part of the rezoning, we can't condition the rezoning on that. If the rezoning's approved and they move forward with a plat, that is something we would definitely address with them, and this has come up before in other plats where we've had to have that addressed before the plat is completed.
Then can we put, we can put that in our other concerns?
We could, to identify the plat process.
And Mr. Schwartz, I have no problem again with that, it's just that 10 years from now, I don't want us to be waiting for the price to go up yet.
Understood. But the picture I think that you have is about a year ago, or maybe even two years ago.
It's old.
So we don't, we don't have what you see.
Well, there were some in the woods, though.
There was, yes.
I, I didn't count them, but I saw them.
Yep, no, understood.
Yep, so, but we'll deal with that in the future. Any other questions? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the other room or online? Linda Jendrow was supposed to be with us. Linda, are you with us? Linda, are you with us?
Yes, we're here.
Do you want to state your name and address for the record and state your thoughts?
Linda Jendrow and Dennis Jendrow, also my son Andrew and his wife Emily Jendrow are here. Our address is 43772 105th Avenue, Holding Ford, Minnesota. I guess our, our main concern with, with this rezoning is the possibility of a third residence, or even more. And just the fact that the land currently is in CRP, and what
No, it's not.
Would, would that land be used for, in the future? There's quite, there's a lot of acreage behind where the current home is, and all of that borders our land, so, you know, and we are aware of the, the cars in the woods. That's a concern of ours as well. But the rezoning is really a major concern, because there's a lot of people in this area that deer hunt. I think Todd and his son also deer hunt, so you're aware of, of how tight the area is. And the idea of one more home possibly close to the road is, is acceptable, but more than that really is not, in our minds. I was just wondering, as we've been talking here, if there's a way that it could stay agriculture, and there could be an exception to put a second residence on a 30-acre. I know that currently you have to have 40 acres to put a residence when it's classified agriculture, but could there just be an exception in that regard?
Why don't, why don't we, Jennifer, answer that?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, commission members, the ordinance allows a second home on a property if it's on a farm site for farm help, or for a family member on a farm. There isn't an allowance currently for a second home on this type of a property unless it's for supportive care, where you have a medical note indicating somebody needs close and constant medical attention. There is, that is something the county is looking at, is maybe amending the ordinance to allow a second small home, like a accessory dwelling unit. That's by six to eight months out yet, but that's something that's being looked at, it would be a smaller structure.
Okay, well, I guess as our family has, has discussed this, you know, we're just concerned about this being, setting a precedent in this area, you know, taking agriculture and rezoning it to residential. You know, this is, as, as was stated early, earlier in agricultural section. And as I stated earlier, you know, the way of life out here, I mean, we're entering that season, and there's at least eight families in this section that deer hunt, and having more dwellings is, is a safety concern, I think. I guess, I guess that's all.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Can I comment on that?
Yep, just hang on, yeah, right, not right now, just hang on. One comment I'd make, Linda and through the Jendrows, is talk to your township, you know, encourage them to have a, a strong comprehensive plan of where they're going to allow growth and where they are, where they do and don't want. Brockway certainly has been not the worst township that's kind of got a plan. Your neighbor certainly is, there is no plan. Neighbor meeting township neighbor. So, but talk to them and work with them to have a more organized plan and not a willy-nilly kind of a plan. That's really where the difference can be made on. Jennifer, do we get any input from any of the townships on any of these items? I was going to ask earlier and I forgot. Other than the minutes of the meeting, this new comprehensive plan form, have we gotten that back from anybody?
Mr. Chair, we got the town, the rezoning recommendation form for the three rezonings, but did not get feedback on any of the other items.
Okay. Which is something we'll have to continue to work on and get the townships to do that. Okay, now, did you say there was a letter?
Mr. Chair, I do have one letter, it's actually from Linda Jendrow, so I can read it.
Does it say the same thing?
Yep, it essentially does.
Okay. Linda, are you sure with this?
Yes, I am.
Do you want her to read the letter, or is your public testimony equal to that, that we don't need to read the letter?
Yeah, it, it basically says what I stated.
Okay, so we won't read the letter, it's the same comments, and thank you. Then, Mr. Schwartz, I heard you say that it's not CRP, do you want to explain that?
Yes, it is no longer in CRP as of this year, because the contract did not go through, the grounds were not permitted. We, it's not a farmable land, it is rolling hills. I understand that, we, I want you to understand that we're only putting one house on there, we're going to split it in half, so the boy can take care of this, take care of us, I should say. And... Uh, and also, um, just a few years ago, uh, we had some other, uh, land divided, which maybe they had more than 40 acres also, which, which could very well be, which would be Linda's. And we had no complaints there.
And, um, I appreciate you saying you don't plan on doing a third home and I believe you.
Absolutely.
However, uh, the request goes with the land and, uh, the first thing or the second thing we're trained on is, uh, you don't base your decision on the applicant in front of you. You, you think of the person after that. So, um, I, I, I believe you, but there is a real outside chance, uh, that that, I mean, there's no guarantee that it could happen. However, if it would happen, it would only be one more. It would, well, shouldn't say that either. Goodness knows what future plans happen, but for right now, I think we're dealing with one additional home, so.
Mr. Chair, if I could offer as well, um, this just came to my mind, one option to consider would be just rezoning 10 acres of it. And if that was done, that would take away the concern of potentially being three or more homes there is something to consider.
So if 10, uh, was rezoned, what would happen with the other 20 would stay with the original house then?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chair.
Is that something you'd be open to, uh, the Schwartzes?
Definitely.
Yep. Cause all we want is one more house out there, so.
That, that's the whole idea.
So I guess if that's something that we want to entertain, that certainly would 100% guarantee, uh, for any future that it would only be two. Uh, the planning commission members can weigh in on that.
Mr. Chair, Mike Perle here. Uh, the only concern I have is, uh, where that second house would be located on, on that parcel. What do we got alongside, close to the road? We don't want to have them develop way back there in the, in that, in the opening area.
To the Schwartzes, do you know whereabouts you're going to put it? I guess it's a little premature, but we certainly can talk about it.
About in this area? I don't, I have the mouse on there. I don't know if that works. Okay. Okay.
It would be somewhere in there, in that proximity, maybe even back just a hair, but not a whole lot. Yeah, right in there.
You see that, Ken? Me and Mike?
Mr. Chair, yes, Mike, I can see that. That's, that's, uh, that makes me happier than, uh, where, where I see where they're planning as where I would have put it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Joe Persky. Jennifer, I've never been accused to be in a mathematical genius. However, if, if we go with the 30 acres and we go with a, a 10 and a 20, can that 20 not be then divided so a third home could go in there?
Uh, Mr. Chair, what I was suggesting is that just 10 acres would be rezoned, our 10, and then the 20 would remain A40. So then it could have another home.
Unless they asked for another rezoning.
Yeah. Joe, yeah, a good question there. Uh, I think it would be, well, I guess I, I'm going to retract my statement. I was going to say it'd be pretty tough to ever rezone another portion of it because of where the houses would be located in, in conjunction with the road, but, uh, I'll take that back because you could put an easement technically, I suppose.
So you didn't say what you just said is what you're saying? It's after eight guys, so I am going to start getting a little squirrely.
Been, been a long day, long day. I'll retract it.
Okay. Well, um, I'm comfortable either way. So, um, as a commission, think about, think about this for a little bit. Let's close the public hearing. I think we're at that point and then we can talk about it and wrap it up. So, um, I don't think there's anybody else that wants to say anything from the public?
Move to close the public.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We would really welcome, uh, what Jennifer had suggested about 10 acres being residential and keeping 20 agriculture. That would really give us some assurance and, um, what, ease our minds, I guess. Um, because really, we understand Todd and Rachel's wanting to, uh, put a second residence there close to their son. Um, but the fact that there could be future homes being built is, is kind of disturbing. So, um, that proposal is very favorable for us.
And we'll take that in consideration. Thank you. Uh, and again, remember, uh, go to the township, nail it down. That's where you can nail it down of what, uh, things like additional won't happen. Um, so.
Thank you.
Uh, yep. Uh, anybody else want to say anything, uh, from the public or anybody else on?
So, Mr. Chair, uh, Jason Wienerman here, just a quick question. So if the applicants are willing, Jennifer, can we do a, um, a modified zoning request on the fly like this to approve a rezoning to one R10 and leave the rest A40?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Wienerman, you could make a recommendation to approve 10 acres being rezoned rather than the full 30.
Thank you.
Should we, um, get the public hearing closed?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I move we close the public hearing.
Okay, Sean's moved. Jason has seconded, close the public hearing. Any discussion? If not, when I call your name, if you want to close the public hearing, say aye. If not, say nay. Jason Wienerman.
Aye.
Sean Blackburn.
Aye.
Jason Cron.
Aye.
Ken Mossman.
Aye.
Mike Perle.
Aye.
Uh, Rich Blankish.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Public hearing is closed. Okay, discussion. Uh, commission members, um, what are your wishes on the?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, um, personally, I really liked it. The whole idea seems like a great compromise to split off the 10 and do it that way.
Okay.
Jason Cron, I, I echo Sean.
Okay. Schwartzes are in favor of it. Uh, Jetros, um, Jen, Girls, uh, were, were in favor of it, uh, don't see any opposition to it. So, um, what do we need to, does that change? It doesn't change the finding as a fact or anything? Nope. Okay. Let's plan on doing that then, and we'll do the findings of fact right now. Keeping that in mind, it'll be the 2010 split. Uh, number one, the recommendation will be for the 2010 split. Uh, number one, does the proposal conform with county's comprehensive plan?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, I'm going to take a shot. I, I was looking at this and trying to figure out how to, how to word this. Um, and, and it gets into the, someone wants to try to take a shot at articulating this better than me. Take a shot, but, um, we had a lot of discussion about the rural character and preserving, um, work, that, but under the living section, so under the living goals, um, we're kind of in, yeah, maybe one of those transitional, uh, area policies. So one of the things I'd send to the living goals is manage the impacts of growth and development on the county's rural character and natural resources. Um, and then also support housing options to keep people in all life stages and of all economic means viable choices for safe, stable and affordable homes. Um, and, and if, under living goals, that's sufficient, I, I'd end there because it starts getting squirrely, just try to connect it with, uh, the different policies.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I just want to add that this is that flexibility that we've been trying to achieve and, and what we've been striving for in the language to be able to accommodate for something like this. And when, when a perfect compromise comes up, we should be certainly able to embrace it.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just, um, to, to recognize that this is, this is an A40 area. Um, and the agricultural goal, agricultural use policies, goal number one, land uses in the ag area should be agriculturally oriented. Um, by rezoning this to residential, we are shifting away from that plank of our, um, comprehensive plan. So as Mr. Cron mentioned, um, we do have, we are trying to have a balance here.
Okay. Uh, number two, is the proposed rezoning compatible with the present future land uses in the area? Present zoning, A40, proposed zoning? What would it be? R10? R10?
Yeah.
F, f, future land use map?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here. Um, the future land use map is, um, agriculturally oriented, so conversion to an R10 is not compatible with the future land uses.
Lisa Score was 49.45 and scenic views rural character. Yes, that's what it is. Three, are the, um, environmental, are there, um, environmental concerns that should be considered as part of the rezoning request?
Uh, Mr. Chair, at this time, uh, not really.
Uh, four, has information been regarded, uh, provided regarding property tax values?
No, no, they have not.
Five, is there a potential for public health, safety, traffic generation impacts based on the proposal, proposed rezoning?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, there, minimal potential there.
Six, how does the rezoning affect existing public services, facilities, including schools, parks, streets, utilities?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, again, it would be a minimal effect on that.
Seven, other issues pertinent, uh, to this matter. Um, one, uh, I would say Brockway Township recommended approval on the original request of two 15s. I don't see them having an issue with this, uh, with both parties, um, agreeing. Uh, two, we're, uh, recommending, or we're acting on this based on the information that were provided by staff, uh, to the best of our knowledge.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here again. Um, just also north of this parcel is the subdivision. So it's not as if we're subdividing in the middle of nowhere. There is a residential development just north of the site. Um, so that may factor into our considerations as well.
Okay. And then, um, uh, obviously the issue that it's changed from a 1515 to a 2010 split.
Yep. Good compromise.
Um, so with that, motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion that we approve with the conditions that it's a 1020 split.
Motion by Rich to recommend approval, the county board, October 20th meeting, uh, recommend the 2010 split.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I'll second that motion.
Second by Sean. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, did we put anything in about those abandoned vehicles?
We're going to do that when it, uh, comes to the plating pro, uh, process.
Well, I'm just wondering about, we, we wouldn't have any input at that time.
We, we, yeah, we can say, uh, well, other issues pertinent.
Yes.
Yep. Uh, how do you want to word that, Commissioner Persky?
Um, it, it, um, it was just, how about it? It was noted that there were some abandoned vehicles, uh, on the property, which is a violation, I believe, to the township ordinance, uh, which needs to be addressed in the future.
Well, and maybe just to your point, maybe we should say not just in the future, but maybe within, no less than whatever you think is a reasonable period of time.
Um, let's go one year.
Okay. Uh, thank you for reminding me of that. I forgot that.
But then that we needed, I just, are there people okay with the motion then amended?
Um, are, are the Schwartzes, are you okay with everything we're talking about here?
So, uh, we have, may have some bodies and cars out there that we will put in demos. We have to get rid of them because you want them taken away other than the ones we're not going to be using.
The, the ones that are abandoned, the ones that will not be used, that, that are not going to be used for demolition. So, okay, the ones that are just sitting there and will not be, be, will not be used.
Well, we take parts off of the ones that, some of them that are sitting there. I do realize that I have a truck or two out there that we will not use, but some of them we will be using.
How many, uh, Mr. Schwartz, how many, how many bodies do you think you have there?
Eight, maybe?
Okay. Uh, would they be limited to the same as the Martins were in, uh, Raymond Township? And how many they have?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is unrelated. The Martins are doing a CUP for motor vehicle repair and that's the section that allows the seven. Um, but we can certainly discuss this with the Schwartzes and talk about, you know, if they're unlicensed, they shouldn't be there. Um, but we can certainly talk about it with them and go through it. And the other option is whether any of them are able to be put inside buildings because that concern goes away as well.
So a combination of limiting how many and where, I guess, is a general discussion. And Commissioner Persky, you said something about it doesn't comply with the township ordinance. What's the township ordinance?
Um, I, I do believe you're not allowed to have any unlicensed vehicles, uh, that, uh, on the premise, uh, for more than one year.
Which is a common ordinance. Cities have that. I know Pinzall has that.
Yeah.
So the township ordinance may already control that. So that's something, I guess I feel comfortable with something like this for staff to have a conversation and to address it, knowing the concern that has been expressed. Um, okay. Any other points or anything? Otherwise we'll wrap this up. Motion's in order. Oh, I'm sorry. We have a motion and second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
It's 8:30. I'm losing it. Um, if not, uh, all those in favor, when I call your name, say aye. Pose nay. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Stay with me, Jason, because I'm losing it. We don't, can't lose you. Jason Cron?
Aye.
Uh, Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Perle?
Aye.
Rich Blankish? Rich Blank? Uh, and the chair votes aye. Uh, motions approved to recommend approval, the county board, October 20th, uh, for approval based on what we, um, what we just did here. Um, item number seven, um, consider rezoning request submitted by Don and Kimberly Larson, St. Joe. Uh, Jennifer, you want to get the staff report?
Yep, this is a request to rezonate 13.1 acres from agricultural 40 to residential five. This property is lot three, block one of Blue Spruce Edition. Um, so this lies, uh, east of County Road two and west of 88th Avenue in section 26 of St. Wendell Township. So if this rezoning request is approved to go to R5, they plan to split the property into two parcels. There is an existing home on this property. Um, just for a background information, this property is part of a four lot plat that was completed in 2002, um, under the A40 zone. So as part of that plat, they did have an equivalent land area of 84 acres that was designated and restricted across County Road two to the west. Um, the property is a mixture of tillable land, grassland and yard. Um, and there is one registered fee lot to the southwest. Um, so there's a map in your packet that shows part of the property falls within the 700 foot, um, So there's a map in your packet that shows part of the property falls within the seven hundred foot setback, but there is room for another home on the property. It is a fairly residential area. As you look at the map, quite a bit of Lake Shore development around Pleasant, what have they, there, sorry, and in the Pleasant Acres area. And there's been a number of rezonings in this area as well, kind of to the north and northeast. Let's see. The surrounding zoning. There's A40 around the property, there is also some R10 that was rezoned in two thousand and sixteen to the east, that's a four lot plat that was developed in there. The lease's score on the property is sixty-nine point three, just over the threshold of sixty-five. And the comp plan, the future land use map, this is in a concentrated development area. And St. Wendell Township recommended approval of the request. That's all I have on this one.
Probably would help if I unmute myself. If you were at the site, say yes, if you were not, say no. Jason Wienerman?
No.
Sean Blackburn?
Yes.
Jason Crone? Jason, no, you need to unmute yourself.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
I can't blame you, I did it, so I can't. Ken Mossman?
Yes.
Mike Pearl?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Commissioner Persky?
Yes.
And I was there. Applicant introductions, I understand that the Larsons are with us by phone?
That's correct.
State your name, yep, state your name and the address for the record, please.
I'm Larson, three, 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 five, one, eighty-eighth Avenue, St. Joseph, Minnesota.
And Kimberly Larson, same address.
Do you want to add anything to the staff report?
I don't think so.
Okay. Any discussion from planning commission members before we open the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, just a quick question for the applicants. Have you given any consideration on to how you're going to do this split?
A little bit, we've been looking at possibly splitting into a, an L shape potentially, because I know we have some power lines that go right through diagonally through our property back there. And we wanted to give people an opportunity to either come in from County Road two or from eighty-eighth Avenue, which is on, aside our driveway is on. And that would give them an access to it either by an easement or part of the property could go all the way across.
All right, thank you.
Jennifer, did you do a site visit, said to be done? Okay, and then I'm not sure on the extras, if it's coming off of the township road or County Road two. Do we know that?
Mr. Chair, we don't know for sure yet. And as Mr. Larson was suggesting, it sounds like they'd like to set it up so it could be off of either. I will say that if there's an option to come off of a local road, the county highway department may require that. So that would be a conversation they should probably have with the highway department if they'd allow an access off of two there.
Okay. We did talk to them for a little bit too, and they said that if we were within three hundred feet of the adjacent driveway, that we would be okay, and that I believe we are. The next driveway is Tyson's, which are just to the south of us, and they're over three hundred feet away.
Okay, very good. And that's something we'll also get formal comments on as part of the plat process if the rezoning goes through.
Any other general discussion by the commission before we go to the public hearing? Okay, we'll open, I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll open up the public hearing, sort of, public hearings open. Anybody online or in the other room that wants to give input on this item? No letters, emails? Anybody online or in the other room that wants to give input? Not, motion being ordered, closed public hearing?
Mr. Chair, Jason Crone, motion to close public hearing.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second that, this is Rich.
Motion's been made by Jason, second by Rich, closed public hearing, any discussion? If not, when I call your name, if you're for it, say aye, pose nay. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Crone?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Pearl?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Public hearing is closed. Discussion by commission members?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here, sorry for not being on the site. It looks like it's farmed. For the applicants, do you farm that, or is it rented land, or? Just kind of wondering.
Sorry, we actually let the neighbor farm that, and we just, we don't rent it to him, and we just let him do it.
So it doesn't go to weeds?
Yeah, and he actually has an agreement through the,
Farm Agency?
Yeah, through the farm agency that we sign every year with him.
Do you know, has he expressed reservations, concerns about potentially losing the acreage?
No, we talked to him ahead of time, and he was fine with it, actually.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Obviously, there's some of us that lease's score brings a lot of bells. And especially in St. Wendell Township, where it's just been a free for all with no vision or plan. Again, remember we lost, what was it, fourteen percent agricultural land as we were doing the comprehensive plan? Bits and pieces at a time, so that's obviously a concern. If there's no further discussion, we'll do the findings?
Mr. Chair, Jason.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, Rich.
Okay, yep.
Hold on, I'll, I'll give you a second. Okay. Looking at the aerial photographs here, it appears that there is a field approach or driveway approach from County Road two, right in the, I'm going to call it the southwest corner. So.
That, that's actually a field approach for the farmland that was there previously, before we moved in there.
Yeah, my question is, you know, there's concern about having a driveway access. I'm just wondering if that is, that could automatically be converted to that driveway access to County Road two? Just a question.
Do you have a reaction to that, Larsons?
We could put a driveway, we could have it come from eighty-eighth Avenue. If that's going to be a problem from County Road two, we would certainly have access from the other side. We would, we would like to have both options if we could, but if we could do it from, if we just could do it from eighty-eighth Avenue, that would be okay too.
Okay. I'll do. Mr. Chair, Jason Crone, again, just sharing my two cents, I know there's a lot of opinions on this. I drive past this property often, in this particular area. I, I certainly don't recognize it as, as being like an ag area. I, I realize there's crops all over, but it's, there's a lot of residential in that area too. So we've got, I still just continue to think we're going to move this challenge over the coming years. And, and how we define agricultural areas today is based on how they're zoned. But I, I think we have to, at some point, keep, continue questioning, how do we define agricultural areas in the county? So just my comments here.
And Jason, I respect your opinions and thoughts. We talked at length about this in the comprehensive plan, I think we really zeroed it in. And you're, it may change in the next comprehensive plan, but we really talked about this. And again, five of the pillars, number one being agriculture, was maintain agricultural land. But it's, you know, township, no doubt, it's a free for all, I mean, it's, it's everything.
Yeah, no, good point, good point, Mr. Chair. And I, I hear you there. The one thing that I do question based on those discussions of the long-term plan is, we definitely talked about transitional areas, and St. Wendell Township's one of them, where we have that challenge. And, you know, as we're getting into it, I, I wonder if we, we defined it as clearly as we maybe should have when it comes to what is a transitional area. There is, again, discussion, but it, I don't know, as we're getting into practice, I see it's coming into conflict. And I'm good, made my point, so we're, we can drive on.
And I think for the Larson's standpoint and everybody else in St. Wendell Township, what really, really would help is if they'd say, this part of the township, we're going to allow development and housing and those kinds of things. And this part of the township, we're going to try to maintain is agricultural land. But if you look at that map, of the zoning map, with all the approvals that we've made over the last several years, it's just like a, I can't think of that board where you throw the arrows. You know, it's a,
It's a dartboard?
Dartboard, thank you, yep, dartboard. It's a dartboard approach, and it's terrible planning. And so, Sean, I see you shaking your head. I'm sorry, I didn't know what a dartboard was there for a second. But anyway, that's, that's a concern, and we all agree with that. But you're right, so do we deal with this one item at a time, or the big picture? Best way to deal with it, big picture, then we don't have to deal with it one item at a time. But that's where we're at, so. But why don't we do the findings?
Well, Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman here, one thing to, to add to Mr. Crone's comments. The lease's score is sixty-nine point three. And the primary driver of that, in fact, the majority driver, is the soils and their characteristics. The site assessment core score is actually less than twenty. So according to the lease's score, it's a very productive site, but it's not high in relative importance. So it's not a balanced lease's score. So just to keep that in consideration.
Mr. Chair, if I could also just make a comment on the map that's on the screen now. There's that red kind of dotted outline area. Realizing that St. Wendell Township hasn't stuck by that, but that is the concentrated development area where they said years ago they wanted to see development focused. And this request does fall within that red bubble, just thought I'd point that out.
Okay, let's do the findings. Number one, does the proposal conform with county comprehensive plan?
Someone else can take a shot at this one.
Mr. Chair, to keep the Jasons, keep, keep our strong power still going. It does, it's a concentrated development area. And it touches upon the living goals of managing impacts and growth and development. They keep them in concentrated areas, a living goal. And also encourage, have residential land use in agricultural areas to embrace future land use factors.
Okay.
And I expect to hear people saying it doesn't, so.
Or we maybe just got worn down, and we're not going to say anything. Sounds like it's the latter. Two, is the proposed rezoning compatible with present future land uses in the area? Zoning, land use map, lease's score, scenic views. Present zoning's A40, proposed zoning, R5, future land use, concentrated development, lease's score, sixty-nine. What is it, sixty-nine what? Sixty-nine point three?
I, Mr. Chair, Jason Crone, I reference Jason Wienerman's earlier comments about the disproportionate way that score was arrived at. High, high soil quality, but, but poor area for the other reason.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I would also point out to Jennifer's point about how this area has been somewhat, somewhat approved for what there could be from St. Wendell as a development area.
Okay, three, are there environmental concerns that should be considered as part of the request?
Mr. Chair, Jason Crone, I don't think at this time, probably in plating is where that'll get addressed.
Four, has information been provided regarding the impact property values?
No, sir.
No.
Five, is there a potential for public health, safety, traffic generations?
Mr. Chair, there is minor increase in traffic with the increase of a house. In addition, the county road access may be a bit of a concern for the highway department.
Six, how does the rezoning affect existing public services, schools, parks, streets, utilities?
That would be minimal, this is Rich.
Seven, other issues pertinent to the matter. St. Wendell Township recommended approval. We're basing our decision on the information we've been presented by staff to our knowledge. The lease's score is sixty-nine point oh three, and I agree with everything that Jason Wienerman said about the skewed number and what Jason Crone said. But I also know for a fact that people literally made a living on that land, farming it. Not everybody was fortunate enough to come in from Spring Hill Township with just wonderful farmland. People made a living throughout the county on much less standard or substandard land, but they made a living on it, they farmed it. So with that, motion would be in order?
Mr. Chair, Jason Wienerman, I reckon, I, I move that we recommend the county board of commissioners approve the rezoning recommendation.
This is Rich, I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Jason, second by Rich, to recommend approval of the county board at their October twentieth meeting for the rezoning. Any discussion on that? If not, all those in favor, when I call your name, say aye, pose nay. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Crone? Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Pearl?
Nay.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
Chair votes no, recommendations passed five to two to the county board, recommend approval of the rezoning. Item number eight.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes.
At this moment, could I get a five minute break?
Sure, why don't we, yep, no more than five, let's do it quick. Um, sure. Why don't we, yep, no more than five. Let's do it quick. Everybody ready?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Everybody's with us, okay? Um, item number, um, eight, consider a rezoning request submitted, or I'm sorry, consider a request submitted by George Myers, Myers Cozy Campgrounds, uh, according to, uh, the sections, uh, for a campground expansion. Jennifer will give the, um, staff report.
This is a request to, uh, expand Cozy Corners. Uh, the request is to add an additional forty-nine sites and relocate eleven sites from the original campground space. So this new area would have a total of sixty sites. Um, in the staff report there, I did, um, include the background, the permitting history there. Um, if Shelley's A-Boy updated that staff report and I sent it out to the commission members, um, today, but it just added a little bit more of the history to go way back to the beginning. Um, the re- campground was actually started in nineteen seventy-nine as a forty-nine unit campground and, uh, slowly expanded over the years to add more sites, add a barn, restaurant, shoreline alteration to have the, um, beach and driving area they have down by the lake, um, and so on and so forth. There has been environmental assessment worksheets done, um, two different times in the past. And both resulted in a negative declaration on the need for an environmental impact statement. So this current request, like I said, is adding forty-nine new sites, relocating eleven sites, and adding a centralized dock system. Uh, the zoning on the property is, is mixed. Um, so the current re- uh, campground is commercial. This new expansion area is agricultural forty. Um, RV campgrounds and resorts are allowed in both zoning districts. Uh, let's see here. So we'll just go down, um, kind of summarize this quickly. Uh, so the density calculations have been completed and the density is met. Uh, each site will be allowed seven hundred square feet of structure coverage. Um, setbacks will be met. So some of the sites, some of the sites, so each site is four thousand square feet and some of the site is within the hundred-foot lake setback, but no RVs and no decks and no sheds will be allowed closer than a hundred feet to the lake. Um, the project will involve installing a new sewer system for this expansion, and we do have a design submitted for that. It's also on private water supply. Natural vegetation, um, so overall, the resort's required to maintain at least forty percent of the shore impact zone within its natural state, and so that is met. They did submit a stormwater plan and erosion control plan to show how they will manage the stormwater on the site with the installation of the new road and RV sites. Um, they'll be installing a holding pond to capture the runoff, the stormwater runoff. Um, as you see in the plans, there's a proposal to have a sixty slip dock system for this new development. The shore impact zone, and that's the land within fifty feet of the lake, that, um, is to be left in its natural state. Let's see, uh, the ordinance talks about visibility of structures from the public water. Um, currently, there are quite a bit of trees there in the shore impact zone, and as I said, those have to be maintained in their natural state other than allowing for a path to be, um, created down to the new dock area. Um, the applicant also will, will be planting at least a minimum of two trees in each RV site, so there will be a hundred and twenty new trees planted. And, uh, the plan for those trees is outlined in the conditions. Parking, um, they have, so they're required to have three parking spaces for each RV site, so that would be a hundred and eighty total. And so each site will have room for two cars, and then there's overflow kind of along roadway for the additional parking spot that's needed. Um, as far as access goes, they do have the one access from Highway twenty-two that comes into the, the campground. I received, uh, comments from MinDOT today stating that MinDOT will require a right turn lane to be installed on Highway twenty-two um, due to the number of new sites that will be plotted here. So that's been added as a condition. Um, another item related to traffic circulation and access, uh, staff is suggesting that, and um, sort of an alternate road be provided within the resort. Um, right now, we have one road that comes in from Highway twenty-two and will be, and going all the way to the south to the end of this new expansion. Um, they are proposing, and, um, it's down a few pages, Shelley, that they would have a um, alternate access road plan is what it's called there. There you go. Yeah, so they would come off of, um, the driveway that goes into the resort and add a, a roadway there just to provide another option for people in case the roadway gets blocked for some reason. So, um, if the Planning Commission were to recommend approval, we have a number of conditions recommended. I think I will summarize them. Um, so number one being an approved stormwater management erosion control plan. That has to be done and also submitting a financial guarantee to make sure that's put in properly. And the stormwater facilities shall be maintained forever. We won't release the guarantee until the installation's been inspected and approved by an engineer. Two, the eleven relocated sites shall be relocated within five years. Number three, the trees shall be planted by September one of twenty twenty-two, according to the approved plan. That includes a mixture of hard maple, oak, um, different species of maple, purple ash, hybrid elm, and hackberry. The trees will be at least, uh, uh, one inch diameter and six to ten feet tall at the time of planting. Um, one thing I didn't touch on with the density, um, to accommodate these new sites, um, what George is doing is adding acreage onto the resort. So one of the conditions is to have that administrative subdivision completed to attach the fifteen acres to the campground by December of twenty twenty. Um, number five, a path to the docks is allowed. The remaining shore impact zone shall be preserved in its natural state. Uh, deadfall may be removed and trees may be limbed up. Except box elder and Chinese elm, the removal of exotic species like buckthorn and purple loosestrife or poison ivy prickly ash is permitted. Uh, six, the dock shall be installed according to the approved dock plan. Number seven, an alternative access road for emergency is identified and shall be, um, made drivable by September one of twenty twenty-one. Uh, accessibility certification form needs to be completed. This is required from, for the indoor pool and bathhouse that was built um, a few years ago, and we hadn't received that accessibility certification, so we're requesting that be submitted by the end of this year. Um, and then nine would be stating that the requirements of the Wetland Conservation Act shall be met. So wetland staff did go out there. The proposal to build up the existing driveway through the wetland, um, will have minimal impact on wetland and can be done within their de minimis exemption. So this condition is just stating that, um, they shall use proper erosion control to protect the wetlands, not exceed the de minimis exemption allowed unless a wetland replacement plan is approved. Number ten, a southbound right turn lane shall be constructed on State Highway twenty-two. Eleven, a site plan for the entire resort showing all two hundred and fifty-seven sites shall be submitted before we'd issue their lodging license. Uh, and two, or number twelve, and this stems from a condition from their very original CUP. It wasn't this property owner, it was the previous owner. Um, but the original CUP required a barbed wire fence to be installed on the south property line, abutting, um, parcel zero eight dot zero four two zero four. Um, so we're suggesting that that shall be installed by December first, twenty twenty-one. And then lastly, suggesting, uh, requiring details on the proposed lighting to include the location, the type, and the height of the lights that will go in this new expansion and shall meet the ordinance's requirements. So that's what I have for the staff report, and then, um, we did get a number of comments, and I, um, do have a summary that I could read when we're ready for that.
Thank you, Jennifer. Um, and conditions nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen were added in your afternoon, uh, submission to the Planning Commission. And Mr. Myers, I assume, was, shared that information as well?
That's correct.
And you did two site visits.
Yep, that's correct.
Um, Planning Commission members, if you visited at the site, say yes when I call your name. If you didn't, say no. Jason Winterman?
Nope.
Sean Blackburn?
Yep.
Jason Cron?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Massman?
Yes.
Mike Perrell?
Yes.
Rich Blankish?
Yes.
Commissioner Persky?
Yes.
And I visited the site as well. Um, applicant introductions, uh, Mr. Myers is in the other room. Uh, George, you want to state your name, address for the record?
George Myers, one nine eight nine seven, State Highway twenty-two, Richmond, Minnesota.
Do you want to add anything to the staff report?
No, they pretty much covered everything that I can say, uh. We're following all the guidelines of the county and all the ordinances. I don't know how much more I can do. I heard that, uh, there's some complaints on causing damage to the lake. I would think that with the stormwater plan, that would actually improve the lake. Uh, I don't know what else I can say about that. I'll leave a go at that right now.
Okay. Um, commission members, any preliminary questions, comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just a quick question for staff. On conditional use number ten, the southbound right turn lane, is that constructed by the applicant? Is that constructed by the county with the applicant funding it? Um, what does it take to have somebody add a right turn lane?
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Winterman, um, that would be, that's required to be constructed by the applicant. And MinDOT has, um, specific requirements or specs on the width and the length and all of that and the striping. Um, but the applicant would be responsible for constructing it. In their permit process, MinDOT requires a large bond to be posted, and then once it's done per their specs, then they would release the bond.
Okay.
But, um, that's a good clarification, and maybe we should just add that a southbound right turn lane shall be constructed by the property owner.
With oversight of MinDOT, you might want to add. Any other comments, questions at this point?
Uh, Jennifer, could you go to the picture of the alternative, uh, access? Yeah, um, I was just wondering about, um, the south end of that still would seem to be somewhat problematic for emergency service, and I was wondering about coming out the backside at all, if it's a primitive road that's not used by the residents but could be used for emergency vehicles, or, uh, I, I, just thinking that, that one access for emergency vehicles, again, could be an issue. Um, where it, uh, the, the, I don't know, what do you want to call that magenta line that you have that connects the two pieces there? Um, as that moves to the east, is it possible that that could come out to twenty-two but not be necessarily a access for the people that are using the park but would have those knockdown, let's say it would be gravel, but would have those knockdown barriers so that it would be another emergency access that way? He could use it for maintenance as well if he needed to haul things in and out as well. I'm just curious if that's at all possible.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, I don't know if there's room there between the RVs and the property lot to put an access road in there. I might, I guess I would defer to the property owner.
Yeah.
Consideration.
I just struggle what, what could potentially happen if you have an, an accident or you have, uh, uh, high winds. If the road gets blocked at one end, you have no access. And, uh, you know, look, going back to my work with the city, we, very rarely did we have a situation where we had a long extension where the, you know, uh, emergency access was cut off and was only accessible in one way. So that's, that's good, and that's why I'm at least glad to see you put the alternative access that's in there. But I'm just wondering as far as access back to twenty-two, if there's anything possible.
We'll defer that to, um, Mr. Myers, um, would something like that fit?
It's, it's possible to come in off the south end there, off of that driveway that comes down. I owned, I own to the middle of that driveway. So it would be possible. I just didn't want an excess there because I don't want people coming in, sneaking in and out of the campground, you know?
Exactly, and that's why I was saying that if you'd had barriers there that are those knockdown, um, and you can just, you know, intentionally knock them down, it, it, again, it, it's, it would be something that would be there and, and God forbid that you'd need it, but, uh, it could be, save a tragedy. And, and again, it could be somewhat advantageous for you to have that if you're doing maintenance or hauling things in and out as well. If that's possible, uh, I, I guess I would like to see something like that. Good, we, we can, we can, we can move on.
Keep, uh, keep that, obviously, when we get to that point, go, uh, bring that point up, and we'll have a discussion as a commission as a whole then. Any other general discussion, uh, questions before we go to the public hearing?
Yes, Jeff, Rich here. Uh, just a question, uh, with the high concentration of, uh, RV campers, uh, is there some kind of storm shelter for those people if a severe storm comes rolling in?
I think Jennifer can answer that, certainly Mr. Myers can.
Yes, Mr. Chair, they do have a, a storm shelter that, uh, was built not all that long ago, and George could probably expand on it. It's, it's quite big.
Yeah, it's a hundred and ten by forty. Yeah, it's 110 by 40. Built by, built under guidelines of FEMA, FEMA guidelines.
Okay, that sounds pretty substantial. Thank you for that.
Mr. Chair, Jason Crone, just a quick question on the new dock structure. Would that be similar to the dock slips that are currently there? Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Otherwise, we'll go to the public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. We'll take the people that are either via WebEx or audio first. There's no one, I believe, physically here, so we'll deal with those first, and then we'll go to the letters, emails. So I understand Mike is with us via WebEx. Are you with us, Mike?
Hi, Chairman Bertram, this is Mike Proziski.
State your address for the record, please.
Yes, it's Mike Proziski, and my wife and I live at 19116, excuse me, Edgeview Road, Richmond.
Okay, and then go ahead and share your comments.
Well, I have provided a letter to the planning commission dated October 8, and then I sent another email with some questions and comments to Jennifer today. And in listening to her staff report, it does appear that she did address a couple of the comments. One was my inquiry about any review from MinDOT, and I was glad to see that that occurred. I did want to make one point with the staff brief and the representation that the subject property is permitted or use is permitted in both the commercial zone and the A40 zone. The Cozy Corner campground is in a commercial zone, but this property, this is an A40 zone, and campground's not a permitted use or an allowed use, rather, it's a conditional use, which is a use that the board recognizes that certain uses, while generally not suitable in a particular zone, may, under some circumstances, be allowed if conditions are attached, and I would say, and if they meet and comply with various goals and objectives in your comp plan. So with that, I just try to make a few quick comments. I hope you've either had an opportunity or will have a chance to read my letter and my comments. But we're members of the Sauk River Chain of Lakes Association. I think there's 400 members, and they have a mission to improve water quality in the chain of lakes. I noticed in the pack that they were identified as one of the referrals. However, in speaking with John Rocky, the president, and Troy Atkinson, they hadn't received a notice or referral and weren't familiar with the application until I spoke with them after I heard or read the Cold Spring Record on September 29. Our concern as landowners and year-round residents is that adding 60 RV camp sites to the addition of the 208 campground sites within Cozy Corner already, and then, as we read in the Cold Spring Record comments about having potentially 200 more sites, it's a concern with the water quality within Long Lake and throughout the chain of lakes. We're also concerned that the existing resort and this proposed 60-site RV park campground with RVs and park models is proposed to be served by an onsite septic system, not a regional or municipal wastewater system where the treatment plant would be offsite and far removed from the lake and shoreline. I also have a hard time understanding how or why it makes sense to approve a conditional use permit for a 60-site RV park where the DNR has already declared, identified, the lake is impaired and giving it the potential to be further degraded. With those comments, I would say I was very happy to see the county has adopted, developed and adopted a comp plan, and this has been done since the last time you considered or conditionally approved some of the series of expansions at the Cozy Corner campground. One of the goals in the comp plan places an emphasis on preserving, restoring, protecting important natural resources, including lakes, water quality, and natural shorelines. I would ask the planning commission to consider the issues of pollution, water quality, when you're considering land use applications. There's the big septic system, increased impervious surface, additional lake traffic, and the like, and concentrating that development along the chain of lakes. I would ask how that preserves, protects, and restores water quality in the chain and preserves the natural shoreline. I looked at the original plan. I sent you a photo of the dock system, and I realized that was permitted and developed long before you had the current comp plan and whatever, and I'm glad to see that there are some conditions related to the proposed dock. But looking at the grading plan, the need for access to the docks and the like, it still looks like it's going to be a significant lakeshore improvement that has visual impacts seen from the lake. I'm not opposed to development on the chain, nor do I presume know what the carrying capacity of development on the chain might be that doesn't degrade the resource. But it seems to me that prior to approving this application for a large, dense development that could set a precedent for approving future land uses for large-scale resorts and other agricultural zone properties on the chain, I'm concerned this will have a long-term detrimental consequence. So I'm asking that you take more time with this application. I looked at the notice requirements, and you met the minimum, which is sending notice to a quarter, owners in a quarter mile of the site. But this proposed development affects really the whole chain, and it, I think, deserves more notice and more robust notice so that more of the public and landowners on the chain would be familiar and have an opportunity to review the plans and provide their comments to the planning commission and the Board of County Commissioners. The submitted plan is pretty general. It doesn't show a lot of the information, other than what the spaces are. It doesn't really address the specifics about the septic system or the wetlands or the natural vegetation areas. It's kind of commented on in some of the conditions, but I think it could be much more specific and shown in a plan. The other thing that I wanted to point out is the comp plan talks about development and shoreline, and I know you haven't yet had an opportunity to look at amending the shoreline regulations consistent with the goals in the comp plan, but it does talk about looking at conservation-oriented plans, plans where you move the development away from the shoreline. This particular plan puts the maximum number of spaces allowed in close to the lake in tier one, and if you look at the spaces, an awful lot of them actually extend over and into the 100-foot setback from the ordinary high-water line. I know the current zoning code may talk about a 50-foot setback from the shoreline. My own residence out here, I had to have a 100-foot setback, and I think that's much more consistent with the goal and objective of the comp plan in order to move development and high-intensity use away from the shoreline and the lake. I thought the plans for the waterfront were pretty vague. In addition to the Sauk River Chain of Lakes Association not having a chance to comment at the time, I hadn't heard, or the staff hadn't heard from MinDOT about the access, so I'm pleased to hear about that. It says the proposed septic system design and plan has not been reviewed, nor has the site grading in the stormwater management plan. They may provide some protection and may be a good thing, but they haven't been reviewed, haven't identified a cost estimate about the excavation improvements, so I'm not sure how you determine what a bond might be, though it's a good idea. And it also says the wetland impact review is in process, but not able to determine how much impact it might be to wetlands, or if there's any net loss of wetlands that are important in maintaining water quality. So I guess I'm asking, do you really feel that the planning commission has enough information, comments from the affected landowners and public to make an informed recommendation to the Board of Commissioners tonight? This is the first application for a major land use change impacting the chain of lakes since the county adopted the 2040 comp plan. I respectfully ask that the planning commission take their time in considering this application as it may or may not implement and further the goals, objectives of the comp plan. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else with us via WebEx before we go to the audio? Anyone else with us via WebEx? And just to confirm, no one's in the other room, shall they? No, okay. Now we'll go to audio. Public testimony, I understand Dale Zimmerman is with us via audio. Dale, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Good evening.
Good evening. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Dale Zimmerman, 19623, State Highway 22, Richmond, Minnesota.
And then share your comments, please.
Sure. I've been working with environmental planning for about 30 years now as in septic inspections, designs, installs, service provider, and I also do lakeshore licensing, so I have a chance to meet with relatively a lot of people. And there, I find some inconsistencies and pretty much uneven as far as how places like Cozy gets treated and the general public. And where I guess I'd like to start, first of all, was with some old history to bring the planning board up. On the last expansion round, what we found out was there was an illegal septic system installed that was fined by the NPCA, and now I hear the system is broken. And I guess I have the question is, is the septic system in working order right now, and is it in compliance? That's a big question that I have, and this is for the existing system because any future systems, first, the original should be taken care of before we allow any more expansion, in my opinion, anyway. So that's a question that I would really like to have answered, please. And...
Dale, why don't we just, Dale, why don't we pause right there and let Jennifer answer that? Jennifer, do you know where the septic system status is?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there is a current certification done in the last three years that indicated it was in complacent compliance at that time. I was looking for the exact date here, but we do have one within the last three years.
Okay.
So I don't have data to show that it's failing in my hands.
Okay, Dale?
Yes, yeah, I would like to beg to question that because I have some information right from Environmental Planning Office that states different. So maybe we could look into that, please, if we could. Also, you know, what we found out on the last round was Cozy Corners was illegally dumping raw sewage into the ditch that goes into Mud Lake, which they were also fined. So this is some history that really concerns me, given the attitude of Cozy Corners. I am an adjacent property owner. I've had numerous amounts of trespass, garbage flying onto my property. On the original plan, we've only asked, when Cozy Corners was created, all we asked for was a 10-foot-high wire mesh fence with barbed wire on top to keep garbage and people because we had such an extreme amount of trespass and garbage. We still haven't seen the fence, however, I did hear tonight, which, thank you very much, it seems like awful small for keeping people on their side of the property, but it's not what we agreed to, and I really think that those conditions should be met before any going any farther, because those were original conditions of the original permit. I also worry about kids getting hurt. I have wildlife ponds. This is an area where we have artesian springs on my property, which flows into the Myers property, which they crossed with that road, and it makes me concerned that, I can't hardly believe that they did an insignificant amount of invasion into the wetland. So I question that because I know what kind of water goes through there. I see it on my property, and I would invite any of the board to come and look if they would like. Also, I also worry about children getting hurt on my wildlife pond. The last thing I would want is to have someone drowned there. I also, at the last meeting when they did the expansion, we had a 400 signatures from people around the lake asking that no more of these kinds of expansions happen until the horseshoe chain of lakes comes off the impaired waters list, which seemed to have fallen on deaf ears, which is very disheartening. Also, on this new proposed site, there was a major amount of cutting of trees in the lakeshore, not in the impact zone, but behind that impact zone. And I called the county to ask about that because so many people I work with can't cut a tree, it seems like, and they can clearcut the land. And I specifically spoke to Rob Spitzley about this, and Rob said that it was being used for agricultural, the trees were being cut for agricultural purposes. All about two weeks later, they asked for the campsites on the same property. Now let's go back again to the beach that's already there. That's actually an illegal-filled beach. It was dug out of the hillside. I witnessed it myself, and that's when the beach and the marina were made. They were fined by the DNR, clearcut the trees. There's still no trees there. There's still no cat hills there. And all it is is detrimental to the lake. The lake's systems cannot take this kind of pressure anymore. I'm very glad to hear though that there is a lane being added to Highway 22, a turn lane that makes me feel at ease. However, Highway 22 is a state highway. There's multiple resorts on that highway, and there's no pedestrian lanes. As a company that operates heavy equipment, I am very concerned about the amount of people on that road with bicycles, roller blades, walking, and those kinds of activities, and there's no pedestrian lanes. And adding to this is scary for me because that's the last thing I would like to see is somebody hurt or killed. These things need to be addressed there. And what's being proposed actually are, they're called campsites, but to me, a campsite is a fire ring and a tent site, not a mobile home park. They're left there year-round with decks and storage sheds. Another question I would like to have answered is the 25% impervious rule being met by the whole campground and the proposed addition, and maybe Jennifer could answer that for me, please?
Mr. Chair, yes, the 25% impervious is met. I don't have the exact number. We had a calculation with the last expansion showing it was met, and now with this new one, it's met. I don't have a number for overall, but, which we could get. It was met last time, and it's being met this time.
Is that all, Mr. Zimmerman?
No, I do have one more comment here. In summary, I just, it makes me feel, after working with so many other people, that Cozy Corners gets special treatment. The campers, it's under my understanding that the campers do not need a county permit to build decks when other landowners around the chain of lakes do. And if the septic system is not functioning properly, which I have some pretty credible resources that say it isn't, the sites, the site and the restaurant needs to be shut down until it gets fixed. I find it funny, after talking with a client, that... I find it funny, after talking with a client that asked me, asked the county the same question of the septic working properly, and the county said to them that they're working on it with them. What does that mean? I mean, anybody else, we would have to fix the problem. Going to the history tells us that there's a lot of illegal install, illegal dumping, illegal beach, illegal marina, illegal cutting of trees, or not say illegal, but under ag, using ag regulations when they're really for campsite. So if you expect the general public to adhere to the ordinances, we need to show otherwise that this is a message, and we can't keep asking for forgiveness later. If you would like more info, I would be happy to meet with any of the planning board members at length. I feel the meeting was rushed, and I found it very difficult to do these kinds of meetings. Please, we do entrust you with protecting our greatest natural resources. Please stand up to date for them and vote no to this expansion. An example needs to be set so that the rest of the general public can see that everyone has to follow the rules. Cozy Corners has put so much strain on our lakes and has given nothing back to clean and protect our water. I want to thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Is there anyone else with us via audio or WebEx that would like to make comments at this time? Hearing none, we'll go to the written testimony. You probably want to go to the summary, Jennifer.
Chairman Bertram, could I make one more comment?
Sure, real quickly, Mike.
Yeah, thank you. So I was confused with the overall site. There's a 20-acre site that doesn't show development on it, but it's added in order to meet density and probably impervious surface guidelines in the zoning ordinance. But it didn't clearly show as part of the plan. I noticed there was a request or condition about attaching it, but is it clear that it would be the entire 20 acres, not just 15? And would that property then be identified as open space? So under this approval, if it were to be granted, there would be no additional spaces or development within that property that's being attached for density calculation purposes? Thank you.
Jennifer?
Sure, Mr. Chair, I can answer that. So there's 20 acres being used to calculate the density for this expansion. Out of that 25 acres is currently already attached to the resort, and that's right where the hand is on the, the cursor is on the screen there. That five acres north of that black line, that's already part and attached to the resort. So south of that black line to the south yellow line, that's the 15 acres that will be attached. It's confusing.
I can't see that through this WebEx thing or whatever, but it would seem as if we're attaching additional property, and we're looking, is that frontage along that 20-acre piece, is that also subject to the condition concerning no change to the shoreline?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, would be helpful to show that in an actual drawing. Thank you.
Okay. So if no one's with us other than that via audio or WebEx, then we'll go to the written review of the submissions that was also sent to us this afternoon via email.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, we received 13 letters from the public, and so what I will do is summarize them now. So we received a letter from Peggy Ladue, and all of these were opposed to the request. She's an adjacent landowner to the south and east, and Myers has made it public that they plan to add 200 sites in the future, according to a Cold Spring Record article. There's concerns with the impact on the environment and water quality of the chain of lakes. The development does not fit with the spirit of the community and is contrary to the lakeshore living policies in the comprehensive plan. She points out the Sack River Chain of Lakes is impaired. The volume of boat and other watercraft traffic is significant concern for all. The roding shorelines could become worse. Septic contamination with high density of wastewater is concerning. Wildlife is abundant in the area. There is a concern with theft, vandalism, and littering on her property by unsupervised children. She states there's been trespassing and sheriff's complaints. Inequitable outcomes for single dwelling property owners compared to an RV park. Concern about vegetation clearing for a field, which was deceptive and misleading. A barbed wire fence was required in a previous CUP but not installed. Had concerns about the lighting and the impact of that on the property. Concerns about trap shooting that's occurred. Impact on property values, and shoreline alteration and land applying of sewage violations from the past. Also received a letter from Ann Brinkman, along with Judy Danielson, and their letters had the same concerns, which were concern for environmental reasons. Natural shorelines are changed and the effect on wildlife. Also concern over increased boat traffic and increased vehicle traffic on Highway 22. Deb Pyle sent a letter expressing concern with pedestrian and traffic impact to Highway 22. Concerned with lake water quality, future effect of worsening water quality on property values and aquatic life. Suggested an increased property owner notification to include everyone on the chain of lakes. Concern about the cumulative impacts of the expansion, which she feels should be studied. Increased in boat and jet ski traffic and noise shore erosion. And also stating it doesn't meet the lakeshore living policies in the county's 2040 comprehensive plan. Edward Lukens sent in a note stating there's already enough boat traffic on the lakes. Chad Keakley, he is with the Eden Valley Fire Department, the chief. We did send it to them for review, and he indicated that he reviewed the proposed plans, and it all looks good. He also reached out to Pam Hague, who's the rescue squad chief, and she didn't see anything that wouldn't work. Rock Rudland sent in a letter expressing concern with the small lake and the pressure that it has. The lake is unsafe for boating, fishing, canoeing, and is over capacity on holidays. So Mike Rosicky sent in a letter and an additional email, and I feel Mike went through all of his concerns very well, so I think we'll skip those. And the planning commission also did get his letter earlier this week to read as well. And then Nick and Tammy Koop sent in a letter. They were concerned about shoreline being cleared and campsites within the setbacks. Visual impact to the shoreline by vegetation clearing, additional boat traffic, and the effect on the ecosystem. Groundwater consumption and the septic load will increase. Can Highway 22 accommodate the higher load safely? Long Lake is at the end of the chain of lakes. Boat traffic remaining on Long Lake will damage the shoreline. There's a narrow area to navigate out of Long Lake that can't safely handle this increased traffic to get into the chain. The Long Lake Creek itself is a sensitive shoreline and will face erosion. Certain times of year, the water is too low to navigate into the chain, which will cause the boat traffic to have to remain in Long Lake. Short term, there may be positive economic impacts, but long-term damage to Long Lake and the chain is a big concern. Gary and Mary Lee Dokendorf are opposed. They live on Cedar Island Lake for 30 years, and now they're just out from the public access on County Road 71. The cluster systems for the wastewater disposal are inadequate for the size of the operation. Increased boats will further degrade the shoreline. The chain of lakes is used by all members of the community and needs to be developed safely. Miles and Margaret Hubbard sent a letter concerned about the degradation of the water quality on the chain of lakes. Increased septic boats pollution, shoreline erosion, and asked for postponing the decision until all voices, all can voice their concern, stating they don't, there doesn't seem to be input from the DNR, the Watershed District, or other experts as to the impact of this expansion. Doug and Kim Mortensen sent in a letter with concern about the water quality impacts and the increased traffic on the lake. They already have boaters close to their docks, casting fish lures onto their dock, et cetera, and they're concerned about the impaired sewer system at Cozy Corners. Ann and Todd Kirchner are also opposed due to the increased density that will reduce the water quality with higher boat and personal watercraft usage, shoreline erosion, water quality and ecosystem issues on the chain already. An increase in automobile traffic is a safety concern, and environmental issues with more pollution, garbage, and septic waste. That's what I have for the written comments.
Thank you, Jennifer. And again, all members received all the full emails, letters for our review, and so we received your overview and also the actual letters and emails. Well, probably one last time, see if there's anyone with us by WebEx or audio before we close the public hearing. And just for understanding, when we close the public hearing, there's no further interaction or input from the public to the commission members. There will be multiple questions to the applicant and time for the applicant to see what he wants to say. So if there's one additional on audio or WebEx, a motion to close the public hearing would be in order?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, I move a close to public hearing.
Motion's been made to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
That's Rich.
Okay, Sean's made a motion, close the public hearing. Rich seconded. Any discussion on that? If not, all those in favor, when I call your names, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Jason Wienerman?
Aye.
Sean Blackburn?
Aye.
Jason Cron?
Aye.
Ken Mossman?
Aye.
Mike Curl?
Aye.
Rich Blankish?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Public hearing is closed. Discussion by any commission members, or maybe what we should do is, Mr. Myers, do you have any follow-up response to everything you heard?
Well, first of all, I don't know where all this is coming from with the septic system not being in compliance. It's always been in compliance. I don't know where that's coming from. I don't know who started that. Another thing about 200 more sites, I don't know where that started. I never said anything about 200 more sites. Traffic, I don't think the traffic, everybody thinks that's going to be a lot more traffic. I don't think that's going to be a real issue. That was a complaint, the last thing, and it's not noticeable. As far as pedestrians on 22, we have an indoor pool. Our kids are mainly on the campground. They don't go walk in the highways. I don't know if that would even increase on that. The turning lane, I have no problem with that. I just heard about that just the other day. I didn't know we had to have that, but I don't have a problem with putting one of them in for safety. As far as more traffic on the lakes and stuff, as you all know, there's been a lot of boats and pontoons and jet skis. Everybody's buying that stuff. The dealers couldn't keep it on the lots. As long as we have public accesses to the chain, I don't think what I put on the chain is going to affect as much as the public accesses. Anybody that spends any time around there sees that a lot of them boats and pontoons, they're sitting on the docks most of the time. They hardly ever leave. I don't even know why people own them, but they do. The fence thing, that's been an ongoing thing since I've been there in the CUPs. It's always been there. He want, there was nothing about a 10-foot-high fence. I don't know where that's coming from. And the setback says 50 feet, but I thought we had to be 100 feet back from the lake. So I don't know. I guess that's just for the building part of it, not the shore, the trees and stuff. I didn't realize that. I thought everything had to be 100 feet.
Why don't we respond to that real quickly, Jennifer? It is 100 feet, isn't it?
Yes, that's correct. Structures need to be 100 feet back. The shore impact zone is the 50 feet, and that is the area that has to be left undisturbed and uncleared and that kind of thing. But any structures have to be 100 feet back.
Because that came up in the testimony, George, so we answered that question. So go ahead, George.
I don't know what else to say on this. I mean, it seems to me like everybody's, we're not touching the wetland that was already gone through with the county. The wetland is staying the way it is. The septic system's been laid out, tested, all that stuff's been done already. I don't know what else to tell you.
Okay, I think there might be some questions from commission members, so just type, members,
In general, Jason Cron, here, just a question on how the process plays out from here when it comes to some of the septic approval, and how those plans, again, we don't see any of those plans. I don't pretend to be a septic expert, but it could either be a concern or not a concern when it comes to some of the other residents and public's concerns regarding water quality, depending on how it's done. I mean, this is a cluster development in some ways, really close to a shoreline. If done properly, it should have far less impact on the lake than what agricultural uses do and have on the chain of lakes over the course of the years. However, if done wrong, it obviously is just going to compound the trophication issues of the chain. So that's, I think, a legitimate concern that keeps coming up, and it's hard as a planning commission member to know which way to vote on it when, yeah, I guess I don't know what that septic plan means. So it's kind of a question for staff. Is there a way that we could get a little bit better insight as to how those are planned and designed?
Jennifer?
Sure, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Cron, so we have a design submitted for a septic system. Scott Elwood, Elwood Septic Professionals did it. It's proposed, well, there's kind of a general area shown on your plans where it's going to go, but what it will consist of is it's going to kind of be two systems for this expansion. Each tank, or each, so it's going to be separated into two systems. Each system will have two tanks, and then we'll have rock drain fields, in-ground trenches, rock trenches for the drain field. So it's being designed to meet all the state standards for campground development. There's specifications that they have to use to determine the amount of water flow for each RV site, and so it's designed to accommodate that.
Okay, okay. And so those states, that's basically standards set by the state, and those have been, in essence, modified. How does the current or the existing septic system have to maintain or meet those same standards, or how have, I can only imagine those have become more restrictive. So it's the first system for put in.
Yeah, so the existing system, I did find the date was January of 2019, when it was inspected by Elwood, and it was noted to be in compliance at that time. The standards for a compliance inspection, so when they do a compliance inspection, there are standards they have to meet to show it's not failing to protect groundwater, that the tanks are watertight. They don't look and make sure it's designed to today's standards, but they, but it, so it met the compliance requirements. If they choose to replace that system and put in a new system, then they have to meet today's standards.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. Thanks, Jennifer. Then the last question on septic, just kind of resolving, there's been assertions made that some of the systems are not compliant currently. The applicant obviously says that there are. You have no doubt as to support those claims. Is there, can we kind of get some clarification on that? Is there data that says they're non-compliant, or are they in fact all compliant to the best ever knowledge with anything? I guess from a factual standpoint, something that's documented.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cron, the documentation I have is the last certification they did in 2019, which showed it passing. I will certainly reach out to our other staff in our office who work with septic systems to find out if there's something else that I'm not seeing. But the last thing that I see on record was that 2019 cert.
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, on that same, in that same line, I'm curious if, if anyone has anything that would give any validity to any of the accusations about any other violations with the, with the boats, the docks, the shoreline, or whatever that was asserted this evening?
I can address a couple of those if you would like. I know there was mention of dumping sewage and also creating the illegal beach area. Those were done by the previous owner decades ago, and we are aware that those events happened and they were dealt with and, and properly permitted or stopped. So those, those are ones that I do know about. The fence we talked about, that was never installed. I pulled up the 1979 permit here, and it required, the exact wording is, "A fence of woven wire and three strands of barbed wire be constructed along the self-property line." Now, we understand was not done, and, and we are suggesting it needs to be done since it was a permit condition. What other ones have I missing?
Just to clarify, when you say you're suggesting you're, it's a condition, it's going to be a requirement. And then getting back to Jason Cron's point on the septic, no matter what we do tonight, if we'd recommend or approval or denial, if there's a violation of septic system and someone can present Environmental Services with information that shows it's not, no matter what we do, certainly Environmental Services process will kick in to force compliance. So if it isn't compliant, if they get information that's valid, they're going to obviously work to make it compliant, so.
Yes, that is correct. Absolutely.
And the fence is going to be constructed based on it being a condition, so. Members?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mike Perrell. I do have a strong feeling about the fence. My feeling is, if it was a condition, my feeling is that good fences would make good neighbors. And if that fence would have been there when it was supposed to have been built, some of the issues that you wouldn't be hearing today, I don't think. That's just my feeling.
Sure. And if my understanding is right, Jennifer, again, just like those other violations, that requirement was to the previous owner, correct?
Yep, that's correct.
And I'm not sure how that slipped through the cracks, but obviously it did. But again, it's a condition now that it will be done.
Yep, that's correct. The other, so that is one condition that needs to be dealt with, irregardless of what happens with this. And the other one is the accessibility certification form for the indoor bathhouse, indoor pool and bathhouse, that needs to be done, irregardless, due to it being a previous permit condition. The plans for that bathhouse and pool were all reviewed and signed off by the building inspector. I think what just failed to happen was the final inspection, so that needs to get done.
And then a point, I'm trying to respond to any questions or anything that were asked either by the WebEx or audio participant or by the letters. There was another reference or two about DNR input. Packet page 28 has the email from Nicola Blake Bradley from the DNR, a lengthy email responding to that. The only thing I'd request, Jennifer, is I don't see your email. She says that she's responding to your email. I just would like to, not at this moment, I don't need to see it, but I'd like to see your email to her. But she does, it's a one full-page email from the DNR responding to the application. So that's on packet page 28.
And one other item, Mr. Chair, I remember now, was the question about vegetative clearing that was done earlier this year. There was vegetative clearing done. It was initially allowed as an exemption for ag purposes. As soon as we received plans for the campground expansion, we did work with George and explain to him that now that there's plans in our hands for an expansion, it's no longer, it's under that ag exemption, and George was asked to stop doing the clearing. So we did tackle that item when that came up.
Did he stop the clearing?
Yes, he did.
Members? Anything else? Joe, you're muted. You were, I saw your lips moving, but you were muted. Did you have, did you have something? Okay. Rich?
Nope.
Okay. Let's do the findings of fact then. Are you ready for that? Number one, is the proposal consistent with existing county ordinances, performance standards, specify the applicable sections of the ordinance, and discuss why or why not?
Mr. Chair, it is applicable with the land use ordinance, county ordinance, sorry, Land Use and Zoning Ordinance number 439, sections 4.8, 6.48, and 10.2.23.
Number two, are there any other standards, rules, requirements that the proposal must meet?
Mr. Chair, I believe now there's 14 proposed conditions based on the additions today. Is that accurate, Jennifer?
I have 13, unless we add it in our discussions, I don't write down.
I think the, it wasn't another one, it was a clarification of one of the conditions. I think, Jason, it was just a clarification.
For the right turn lanes.
It's still 13.
It is. I think you, I just finally found that back, and you're, yeah, it's accurate, 13.
Three, is the proposed use compatible with the present, future land uses in the area? Or can it be separated by distance or screening from adjacent land uses? Why or why not? How will any scenic views be impacted by the proposed use?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, you know, based on the location of this one, I think the, it will be somewhat screened more so than one of the previous additions, which is right off the highway. Although it, it will be more visible in certain areas, depends how you define it.
Four, are there environmental concerns, groundwater, surface water, air quality, wellhead protection that should be addressed as part of the proposed request?
Mr. Chair, there were a variety of environmental concerns identified by many of the residents and others who expressed concerns about this expansion. But I believe most, if not all, of these concerns will be addressed by the 13 conditions as pres discussed by Mr. Cron, should they be stringently followed during the process.
Five has information been provided regarding the property values of the area as result of the proposal.
Mr. Chair, there's been no information providing that.
There's been no official information. There was a couple of references to it in the public comments, but no factual information presented from the county. Six, what potential public health, safety, traffic generation impacts will the proposal have in relation to the area and its capability of the road serving the area? How are they being addressed by the proposal?
Mr. Chair, there might, there's potential for moderately significant increase in traffic. In terms of the traffic patterns, the addition of the right turn lane will mitigate the impact to folks passing this area, but it has been identified as a potential concern on some of the landowners.
Mr. Chair, I would, Sean Blackburn, I would also add that there's going to be a bit of an increase in the traffic flow on the lake. When we're talking about more parking slips and things like that with docking and more people using the lake, so that will be impacted as well.
Good point, Sean. Commissioner Persky, is this where you want to address that road, or do you want to do that with other issues?
Yeah, I had lost the screen here, but I did get it back, so now I can see what's going on. Yeah, I was wondering about putting that condition in. Again, I would, I would hate to see a major event out there or, you know, a tragedy, tragedy happen out there and not being able to get responders there because of the closed road. And George, I don't know, is that, is that an option, actually have another access off of 22?
It is an option.
And again, again, it does not have to, when I say it, it can be emergency in that you can have it there as a temporary road for yourself to use for maintenance or whatever, and, and have those knockdowns that, you know, an emergency vehicle can just move forward over across those. But a general driver is going to ruin their vehicle if they try it.
So it can be a dirt road?
That's what I'm saying, just the gravel access to get in there. Because again, if, if there's a storm or you have a wreck, and, you know, it's impassable to come through the one entrance, there's no other way to the backside of that park.
The only concern I would have would be, is MINDOT going to allow, what do you call it?
Emergency access. That, that I don't know. We've used them here in Sartell just for emergency vehicles to, you know, to public buildings.
Yep, and we had one in Painsel Township along the trail with the same thing with the breakaway post. But MINDOT would have to approve, which they maybe would, depending upon if I, I'm not clear if this is going to the north.
That, that's, that was, that was my understanding. It would be out onto 22, again, similar where that road came, came in. Or George, did you have, or George, do you have another access, access?
There is two accesses into my property now. There's one off of Edgerton also.
So you want, you want be reliant on MINDOT granting an approach, there is existing approaches, you're saying?
Yeah, if you look right up on Edgerton, there's a, there's a approach coming in there into the campground also.
Well, that, that would eliminate, that would eliminate that concern then. You would need their approval for an approach. You already have approaches you could potentially utilize. Should we make this as a condition then? We're talking about it under item six, but we maybe shouldn't, should make that as a 14th condition then.
This is Jason Cron, just coming in here real quick. Just a couple of comments. Joe, I like where your head's at on this. One of the things I do question, though, if it's going to be effective in this case in serving the purpose that you're talking about, it really would almost have to be on the south end of that property. That's where the proposed, you know, lots are going to be doing, the one-off Edgerton. The complete option. The other thing is, there has been a couple of comments.
I don't even know if they'll let you put one there.
Yeah.
Jennifer?
Eden Valley Fire and Rescue, Eden Valley Fire and Rescue has commented on this. And so I do, I guess, value their input in that they reviewed it and felt comfortable in accessing or accessing those, those new sites. But anyway, just a couple of comments on that.
Well, I don't know about coming off 22. You know, that's a hilly area up there. I don't know if they'll even let me put an access off there, and then we'd have to cut the hills to put a road in there, put a gravel road down there.
Yeah.
That's, that's rolly ground up there on that 40.
Right, which is kind of why I want to just provide clarification. If we make it a condition, I just want to make sure that's a, that actually is a feasible condition.
I hear, I hear you, Jason. I see what you're going, where you're going with this. Well, George, but the, the additional road that's suggested by staff, you're okay with that one?
The one that I got to on Edgerton, you're talking about?
No, the one that staff had, had drawn in.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah. That would be pretty simple to put.
To knock that through. And is it, is it possible to put something temporary at Edgerton? I mean, is that a bit, is that an issue or not?
That's open all the time off Edgerton.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, there's a road there. Yep.
All right. Okay. And then I, I have one other question, George, just to get back. A lot of people have angst because of the number of units that you're putting in. And I think some of that angst is because they, they think that you're going to have occupancy of, you know, 60 new people 100% of the time. Well, in a way, this is not like a mobile home park where everybody's there all the time. Can I ask, what do you have for attendance rates typically during the week and on the weekends? What percentage of people are there and which people are absent?
I would say you're lucky to have 50% of the people there.
Okay. So typically, so typically, it's about 50% on the weekends?
You know, this year with COVID, it was more because people didn't have nothing else to do. But other years, it's, I don't even know if it is 50% other than a holiday weekend.
Okay.
With the road idea, what we could do is include it with item number six, what potential public health, traffic generation, say that, you know, that the applicant would be open to potentially put an access in, and to Jason's point, which is legitimate to the north, or wait a minute, to the south, to the south, because that's where the addition is, so that the applicant would be open to pursuing a potential additional road. And then that way, we're not making it as a condition. If he can get a approach from MINDOT and he can cut into the hill and he does it, great. Otherwise, there's other options, including the one that Commissioner Persky just said that's drawn on the map that we're looking at right now. So that would be a way of not making it a condition and yet leaving it as a discussion point. Would that be appropriate, everybody?
That's fine.
Okay, let's do that then. Seven, how does the proposal affect general health, safety, welfare of the residents?
Mr. Chair, it's kind of a...
Mr. Chair, it's kind of a, the residents, it depends who the residents are. There's some residents around the area that I think have, have some opinions on how it would affect them for those that, that are in the campsite. You know, it's, it's additional opportunities for them.
Eight, does the proposal conform to the goals and objectives the county comprehensive
Mr. Chair, this one's a little trickier, under the new comprehensive plan. I'll take a shot, because I honestly think you can look at a varieties, variety of these and make conflicting arguments. In, one of the, the golden objectives under the nature goals, line item three, recognizing the significance of water resources in the county and ensuring the creation and implementation of policies to manage stormwater in collaboration with land use and development. We spent a lot of time talking about a lot of issues around these items. There's obviously concerns. You can make an argument that it's going to detract from those things. And you can also make an argument that if done properly, it should not, and in some ways be, be better than how it's currently zoned as agricultural. I think it's, you can make a very strong argument that the eutrophication of the stock river chain lakes has historically been, which also is not a natural system historically, it's a, it's a reservoir. But it's been degraded by agricultural practices in, in years past. So if done properly, this should actually improve water. But if done improperly, yeah, it's, it's going to be a problem. You can do the same thing as beginning to additional water resource policies, recognizing the relationship between land use, water quality, and continuing to support water quality improvements through land use plans and regulations. Spent a lot of time talking about it. So we could go on and on. I'd be curious to hear your thoughts about others.
Mr. Chair, there, I, I agree with Jason. There's, there's, depending upon how this is managed, the natural resource issues are really important. The comprehensive plan also under the business goals talks about acknowledging tourism's economic value and the prospective contributions of the industry to both diversity of the county and potential for growth. Apparently, based upon what folks are saying, this site has, is a successful tourist site. It does attract folks to the area. So by improving this, where, where reaffirming the, the concept that tourism does have value, and the Channel Lakes is going to draw people both to this site and also, as the owner said, to the public accesses. So we have a, a good golden opportunity, and we want to make sure that as long as we stick with the conditions, we won't wind up killing that golden goose.
Other comments? Nine, how does the proposal affect existing public services and facilities, including schools, parks, streets, and utilities?
Mr. Chair, Sean Blackburn, there will be a bit of an impact, a slight increase in some usage and demand, but nothing too drastic.
Ten, has the applicant provided financial assurance to guarantee reclamation or cleanup?
Mr. Chair, there's a variety of different things under here. So we talked about the, the county road needing, the highway department needing a bond for the construction on that. Some of the other projects will need some kind of guarantees and assurance. So I think those are all included in the conditions.
Eleven, other issues pertinent to this matter.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to just make a comment on issues. So I appreciate all the public coming and truthfully. I've, I've gone back and forth over the last few weeks, looking at different ends of this. And I'm, I'd consider myself a stakeholder on this as well. I'm a property owner, live on the Channel Lakes. So anything that would happen from a water quality issue is going to flow right past my house as well. And with all of that, you look at, hey, I see increased boat traffic every day. I get that. However, it's also public resource or lakes, and, and these are not privatized systems. It's, it's a public system. So giving people accesses, I mean, if, if we're going to talk about traffic congestion as a result of a campground, by not allowing that, we're shifting it to the public accesses, which are already crazy. So, you know, there's demand for water systems, and, and I don't know that granting, you know, an access point for, for more campers is going to dramatically impact that. So it's been a tough one, but I do appreciate the comments that the public provided. And certainly, I've taken a lot of different looks at this from different angles.
Mr. Chair, I have to apologize. I neglected to comment on a comment that we got from the assessor's office today, and it jogged my memory when you got to the property value question. So Angie reached out to the assessor's office today to see if they'd be able to provide us any input. And this afternoon, they did come back with an email. I'll read it, it's not too long. Pertaining to impacts on property values caused by market perceptions or issues relating to the use of a specific property poses some of the most challenging properties in real estate evaluations. There's minimal market data in the surrounding area of cozy corners, but I looked at our valuations in comparison to sale prices. Currently, there's no downward adjustments being made to properties due to the presence of the campground. I then looked at the assessment level of surrounding properties, the ratio of what they're selling for in comparison to the assessed value. The assessment level seems similar to that of properties of more distance from the campground, therefore, no indication of diminuation of property value. Remember, the marketplace is the final arbiter of market value. As assessors, we act like historians, recognizing the factors of influence that bear on market value based on past trading practices reported through the interactions of buyers and sellers. So if any market evidence is presented that indicates there's a reduction in value due to its location, we'd certainly review that data and analyze it as part of our current study. But at this point, they haven't seen a diminution in property value. That was from Randy, Randy Law. He's the Assistant County Assessor.
Received 13 letters, heard from two people through webex and audio. So we, we received and have taken all that into consideration. And once again, we're basing our decision on the information that we've been given by staff to the best of our knowledge. With that, a motion would be in order?
Mr. Chair, Jason Cron, I'll make a motion to recommend approval with 13 conditions to that.
Jason's moved to recommend approval to the county board. Remember, we are recommending body. The county board makes the final action. That will happen on October 20th. Jason Cron makes that motion. Is there a second? I'll second that. This is Rich. Rich Blankish seconds it. Any discussion on the motion to recommend approval to the county board on October 20th? If not, I'll call the roll. If you are in favor of the motion, say aye. If you're opposed to the motion, say nay. Jason Wienerman.
Aye.
Sean Blackburn.
Aye.
Jason Cron.
Aye.
Ken Mossman.
Aye.
Mike Perrell.
Nay.
You're muted, Rich.
Sorry. Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So the reclamation is to the county board on a six to one vote to recommend approval. Next item are the minutes. I don't know, Deb, can you join us verbally or Jennifer? Do you want to explain? We received, Deb, explain briefly, the two different minutes. Something to do with the hike key solar. Deb, are you willing, or you were able to talk to us, or Jennifer?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, my belief on the, the change in the minutes was a rewording on the findings of fact for the height key item.
Okay, just tell her, Deb, you're going to tell Jennifer, I want to get it right. It happened four and a half hours ago, so I forgot.
The finding of the facts, I added 12 through 14, where in fact, it should have just been included in number 11.
Okay. So on the findings of fact for the height key item, numbers 12 through 14 were added, but they, they should have been included in item number 11. So it was reformatting is what it was.
Yeah, the bullet numbering was just incorrect.
So I didn't, I just reviewed the two when I asked Deb when I came. So that, that's, that's what that's about. So the, and then it says, yep, so a motion would be in order to approve the September planning commission minutes.
Mr. Chair, so move, Ken Mossman.
Okay, moved by Ken to approve the minutes.
Mike Perrell, second.
Seconded by Mike. Any discussion? If not, if you're in favor of approving minutes, say aye when I call your name. If you're not, say nay. Jason Wienerman.
Aye.
Sean Blackburn.
Aye.
Jason Cron.
Aye.
Ken Mossman.
Aye.
Mike Perrell.
Aye.
Rich Blankish.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The minutes are approved. Other discussion? I sent an email to Jennifer with these items that I was told minutes before the meeting that, by Shelley, that they're going to respond by email to me, and I will share that with either all the members, if you wanted, or the members that have shared the request to have follow-up. And the items I requested follow-up are the Plaf agreement, the William and Julie Madigan update on their impression of interaction with SFR WSD, Albany recycling compliance, Stonegate and Tangle, Cat Peppers, Drought and Long Lake item, the novel high-key unanswered questions from the last meeting, confirmation of the risen fence removal and barbed wire of the Steamer Solar Project. And then, so those items are going to be responded to according to Shelley via email to me, and then I will distribute accordingly. And again, if you want it, ask me, and then I'll get it to you, and then I'll respond to those who raise some of those issues with me. And then, as an FYI, in case you didn't catch it, Sean, you're on the Board of Adjustment, correct?
Correct.
Yep. Shockingly, I just caught this two days ago. Item number one on your Monday night meeting is to consider an after the fact request from Jerry Kuns, JK Landscape, on behalf of Paul and Amy Vate, St. Michael. So there's another violation from J and K, evidently. But now this one's going straight to the Board of Adjustment. Jennifer, you know anything about that, or?
I am not familiar with it, Mr. Chair. I believe Shelley is.
Okay, Shelley, you want to share? I, I guess, I don't know if any member saw that, but I mean, what is this now, the fifth violation and going to the Board of Adjustment? So we violated it, but hey, just let us do it. What do you know about it, Shelley?
I think you're off mute now. Guess we can't hear you.
Maybe you can come in here.
Yeah, you could come in here and use mine if you like.
I'm sorry, I was talking to George. He has some questions. I didn't hear the question about the JK item on Board of Adjustment on Monday. And I am not, because I wasn't present in the review at all, because I was at the AP meeting. I do not know. So I'm sorry, I actually do not know.
Okay, okay. So you maybe can report back to us after that meeting on Monday night, but obviously, you will know more of the history than probably any other, other Board of Adjustment members. But I guess, again, I don't know if, it's just me, but I'm just shocked. And Commissioner Persky, are you with us yet?
Is I here?
Okay, I mean, obviously, how many violations before somebody says or does something? I'm not sure. So.
And I, all the after the fact really gets under my nerves, and especially because there seems to be some kind of premeditation. They, they have to know what they're doing on a lot of these things.
Well, and for, what's really bizarre to me is, we expected this 15 years ago. You just wouldn't expect it today, and it seems to be on a huge increase. But just, Sean, you're a representative on the board, so make sure that this doesn't get blown over. I don't know what the details are, however, it's not the first one. So, and then if you could update us, either staff and/or you on the discussion, I for one would appreciate that. Any other items by members or staff?
No, Mr. Chair, again, directly, you know, violate the rule on that number two today, that Doug Brown to come in and do the excavation. Well, didn't he not know what the rule was? I, I find it difficult that we had a contractor come in and do that work without the permit. Likewise, the owners of that property, being a superintendent of construction, got to know the protocol. And it, it, again, you come in, okay, you bought an old property, well, you're going to fix it up. Well, you're going to fix it up to what you want, but obviously, there's standards that the county has and regulations the county has. You know, they didn't even come to ask us. And then just to say, well, after the fact, well, you know, you know, we're not going to have you take those walls out. It's too much of, of an effort to do that. Well, how can they not just do that with thinking they're going to get by? It's, it's difficult for me to continue to see this time and time again.
And again, if there wouldn't have been a report of it, staff wouldn't have known about it, which, again, it's hard to keep on top of all that. But we certainly, and I think staff got the point, we need a lot more information, incredible information from staff. It shouldn't take us measuring the wall out there and some of the other things. Once we know about it, we really need to take this more serious, I think. So anything else from anybody else? We don't have to do it by roll if I do it, so I'm just going to adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everybody. Four and a half plus hours. We did good. Have a good night.